Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, July 16th at 6:30. Council President Witherspoon, members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaff is attending by Zoom, Titus, and Troop. Stand for the Pledge Allegiance and a moment of silence.
President.
Yes.
During tonight's moment of silence, I ask that we hold space for Marcello Woodard, a father, a partner, a son, and a beloved member of our community whose life was taken on July 22nd. May we honor his memory with truth, accountability, and a commitment to justice.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The school district family lost a very important guy. Danny Bukowski passed away. He was in the culinary, he was a chef back in the day, Central. Unexpectedly, heart attack, he's gone. Great guy, great basketball player, and a great friend. And I concur also with Mr. Titus.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag. To the flag of the United States of America. We salute your brother who gives us strength. One nation under God. The big rule, liberty of the free.
I have a motion to accept the minutes from the July 2nd, 2025 meeting and bills for payment on July 18th, July 25th, and August 1st. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon.
Tonight, we have a presentation. Is Mr. Matt Puzz available?
Matt is the chairman of the Environmental Advisory Council.
Thank you for this opportunity. Good evening, Council President and esteemed members of council. My name is Matthew Puzz, and I'm the chair of the Environmental Advisory Council, which I'll refer to as the EAC. The EAC was established in February 2023 with the first meeting being held in November 2023. During this time, the EAC has discussed numerous environmental issues, and we'd like to update City Council on our progress on the EAC's priorities. The development of a local climate action plan, or LCAP, a major priority of the EAC, began before the EAC was established when, through a partnership with Penn State, two students began compiling a greenhouse gas inventory for the city. Data were collected from several sources, including utility companies and city authorities, to determine the amount of greenhouse gases that were emitted from numerous sources. For example, residential, commercial, and industrial uses, as well as vehicle emissions. The LCAP is the next step in the process where the city analyzes the data collected and makes recommendations for future actions to diminish or prevent negative impacts on the environment. Another priority of the EAC is the Plastic Waste Reduction Initiative. Plastic waste, such as plastic bags, disposable food and drink containers, and plastic utensils, is a serious threat to wildlife, human health, and infrastructure. At the macro level, plastic bags, food, and drink containers and other plastic waste destroy the natural beauty of our streetscape and Lake Erie. Animals can become entangled in plastic or consume plastics. Plastic waste can enter the storm sewer systems, causing infrastructure to back up or to fail. Plastic bags also become caught in trees. At the micro level, the plastics break down into smaller and smaller pieces, nearly invisible to the naked eye, which are ingested by all animals in the food chain, including humans. The EAC has been reviewing several ways to address reducing the reliance on disposable or one-time plastic-use products. The final priority of the EAC is the Dark Sky/Bird Safety Initiative. The environment consists of both natural and the man-made world. Many urban areas suffer from light pollution, which not only obscures the night sky from being seen, it also impacts birds, birds, excuse me. With Prescott hosting over 300 bird species, Erie is a major stop for many migratory birds. Light pollution compounded with a common building material, glass, can disorient a bird, causing collisions with windows, leading to serious injury or death. The EAC has researched ways to improve glass visibility for birds and bring awareness to light pollution. In coordination with the city's planning department and sustainability coordinator, the EAC has been actively pursuing initiatives that will benefit the citizens of the city of Erie by protecting and promoting environmental health. The EAC members are available for a study session on these initiatives, and City Council would like to know more about them. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the EAC tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Any questions from council? Thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Is there anyone here for repository sales?
Evening. Paul Rogers here, looking and purchased property at north of 2214 Camphausen. The plan is to put some gardens and a picnic area in. And I live within two miles, so maintaining it's not an issue, and I have had no code violations last three years.
I'll go ahead and ask, we have just a list of questions, so let's run through them really quick. You've already answered a few of them. Is the property currently vacant, or does it have a structure on it?
It's vacant.
And then what condition would you say the property is currently in?
Taller grass, I don't know, fair.
The other question that we have, and then you've also started, do you foresee that you'll have any issue providing maintenance, such as responsibilities around mowing, snow removal, rubbish removal, border, but you already said there's no structures. Anything kind of making sure the property stays with up to code?
No.
That's the list of questions that we have here to go through. Does any other council members have questions?
Hearing the more questions, we will not vote on that tonight. We'll vote on it in the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other repository sales? Are there any other repository sales? Are there any other repository sales? Here are none. Okay, our next item on the agenda is public comments. And if you would, if you want to address council, would you please line up over there and give us your name for the record and your municipality? You do not have to give your address, just your municipality.
Mr. President, may I make one more comment? Just to kind of explain a little bit about this process as well, too, for transparency end, this is our opportunity to hear. Sometimes it can feel dismissive or disingenuine when we don't engage back, but this is really the public's opportunity to be heard, so if we don't give comment back, or we remain silent, that's why, it's not because we're not listening. This is really your opportunity to get to talk to us, and we stay here and we listen. So I didn't want anyone to think that we weren't acknowledging what was being said.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Terry Roberts from the East Side. I'm here because of my cousin Marcello Woodard was murdered. At the end of that pledge allegiance, y'all said injustice for all. We say injustice for cello. And I've been in this city all my life, I worked in the Erie County prison, and whenever there's a suspect, they sit in that jail while investigations is going on. Guilty or innocent, they sit in that jail. And not once has nobody stepped forward and gave a name, put pictures on the news, or anything. I've seen people's names and faces get put on the news for child support, but for murder of a man who didn't have a weapon, we don't get no answers? It's not right at all. And I'm standing here in front of y'all, you just said y'all usually don't get feedback? I would like feedback and want to know, when is y'all gonna make some move?
We don't, that's the rules of council, it's been that way. We listen to you.
I understand y'all listen to me, Mr. Spoon, but this is a city, y'all run this city, y'all run these officers and everything. What I'm saying is, once there is a suspect, the Erie County prison is full of suspects, they investigate, and whosoever a suspect is either found, innocent or guilty, they're sitting in jail while there's an investigation. Why isn't the two in jail right now that murdered Marcello Woodard? And then we got, I've talked to several people who are on state parole now, who have six months left on parole, and 90% of the POs don't even bother the clients when they got six months left on parole. All we want is something to happen. That's all we want. Justice for cello, that's real. And what we consider justice is an arrest with no bail. I know y'all said y'all getting no answers, I don't see nobody writing nothing, and I'm saying this respectfully, but I would think y'all would keep some notes on what I'm saying, so y'all could present this to whoever, meeting y'all go to.
It's being taped, we look at, I know I look at the tape when I leave here, and I make my notes at that time, and sometimes I do make a note up here, and I know exactly what you're saying.
Appreciate it. Justice for cello.
Good evening, board. My name is Michelle Dolishaw. I grew up here, graduated from tech when tech was tech. I lived in various states. I worked for the Department of Corrections in Georgia. And one thing I know, in every state, they name it different, but it's called a use-of-force continuum. That is the law in every state. If the suspect or parolee, probationer goes here, you're only allowed legally to step up one step. I have watched frame by frame, I am very meticulous. I have watched frame by frame the videos that have been released. Car never moved until Marcello was murdered. I am appalled. I grew up in this city. I grew up in the Holly, I grew up in the Terrace, I grew up in the hood. I'm educated. My friend, my friend now has to live without the man that she loves because of somebody that took it upon himself to play God. We as a community, no matter black, white, red, orange, rich, poor, we all need to be standing for this. Because if not, next it could be, it could be Mr. Troopstein, Ms. Flores's child, Mr. Witherspoon, you've been around a lot of years, it could be one of yours. And what Mr. Robert said, if I go out right now in the street and I pull out a gun and shoot somebody, I'm going to jail with no bail until they investigate. And I think as a community, we demand more than just, "We're investigating." We demand justice for Marcello Woodard.
How you doing? My name is Kennedy Horton. I'm here for Marcello Woodard as well. We're all here tonight because the local government in Erie, you know, we've, the local community, really, we've witnessed a public lynching happen, and it's gone unchecked so far. It's not right. Just as the last two speakers said, when a crime happens, the investigation happens with that suspect in jail. That's not happening right now. And again, it's wrong, we could all agree on that, but it's only, I won't say only, more than likely cases like this happen when the victim is black. You know, when a black victim happens in Erie, PA, nothing really happens on the law side, you guys kind of drag your feet, you know? Years ago, when George Floyd lost his life, and you know, we protested down here, you know, our mayor, Mr. Schimber, you were out here right in front of City Hall on your knees, you know? And you said to me directly, "I'd do anything to end racism in Erie, Pennsylvania." And we met with you, and we asked for a civilian review board, to which you said, to which you said, "We needed a study done," to which we said, "A study has been done already, and we still have no civilian review board." Our complaint system down here for City Hall about law enforcement is almost non-existent. I believe the box is less than 12 inches. You have to speak to numerous people just to get your complaint into the box. And right now, we're witnessing what happens when things like this go unchecked. I spoke down here last year about something that may seem trivial, but our City Hall doesn't recognize Juneteenth as a holiday. You know, people get tickets on Juneteenth, which is a federally recognized Independence Day for America. I asked, is one Independence Day worth more than the other? I got no answer. But we can see that some lives here in Erie, Pennsylvania are worth more than others. And right now, you guys are telling us that Marcello Woodard's life was worthless. You're telling us that our lives are worth nothing. I don't know everybody, I don't know everybody in government personally, you know, I try to speak to people when they're speaking to me and, you know, have a genuine exchange. So genuinely, when you told me that you would do anything to end racism in Erie, PA, I haven't seen what you've done, you know? And even, it just keeps coming up. This is what's happening today, but a couple years back, somebody I know was punched and called a nigger outside of Docksideers. When they went down to the police station to file their police report, they were handed a charge, a felony. They were told that they assaulted somebody. And then that person said, "Hey, it has to be on video," and they told them to go get the video, right? When they go to get the video, the video owner said they already turned it over to the police. That is the type of stuff that we deal with. These people work under your authority, yeah, you know, you're their boss, you know? So I know that leadership is a top-down thing. So when the leaders don't show that they care, the underlings will show that they don't care. And as I understand, one of the accused murderers has been ousted from prisons where they already treat people horribly. He treated people so bad in prisons that they made him transfer. They didn't fire him because they cared about his life and well-being, knowing that he would not be able to work in law enforcement ever again if he was fired. This man is one of these murderers. Why is this even allowed?
Thank you. Time's up, sir.
I appreciate all y'all, you know, all of y'all have kids, all of y'all have grandchildren, or, you know, everybody has family up here.
Your time's up, sir.
Thank you. Everybody has family, I just want y'all to know that somebody's family is real.
Time's up, sir.
And somebody else is with their family.
I understand the frustration, but everyone deserves five minutes.
Mr. Spoon, you've been around the block more times than once.
Yes, sir. And you're out of order. You're out of order.
I believe, I believe, but you saying true.
I under- Oh, my brother, look. If I come in your house, I have to follow your rules. You in my house now, so you have to follow the rules, that's all. Well, I tell you, like the brothers, like the brothers, like the brother said, "I've been around the block." Okay? Now, I can clear this room by the sound of the gavel, but I want to hear what you say. I don't disagree with you. I agree that the steps should have happened. Sir?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Deontay Cooley, I'm here to speak to the same issue, and some of what you just said is kind of what I want to speak to. Like, you threaten us with your power. You literally just said, "I can clear this room."
Yes, sir.
No, you also said you don't respond, you allow us to speak. So what I'm gonna ask is, so I can finish my statement.
Yes, sir.
So you literally just threatened to clear this room out when there's nothing out of order. But again, when they came down here with their red hats on, they were rowdy, and they were live, and a lot of you guys sitting up there didn't stand for Jasmine. But then when they came for you, you called for community help, and we came for you. I have yet to see you in the neighborhood, I have yet to see you, and it happened in your neighborhood. But when they vandalized the park, you threatened the community to pull the nets, to pull the benches. And when it was time for another term, and it was somebody to reelect, or whatever the case may be, this same community filled this room so you can get that seat. This same community filled this room so you can get that seat. I have not seen you, Mr. Brzezinski, in the neighborhood since his heart started, Mr. Molt, have not seen you in the neighborhood. You work with the kids of the family of these people in this school. This is your neighborhood as well. When you ran, and we were all running, we were glorifying, I come from this neighborhood. These are my family, these are my folk. There are people here who are crying, and you all haven't showed up. Chuck came to give a speech, Dr. Thomas was there, Dr. Titus was there, Mayor Schimber was there. You guys aren't showing up for our community, and then you tell us, "I will clear this room with the gavel." This is not your house. This is the house of the people, and it is unfortunate that, it is, I'm not finished, it is unfortunate, hold on, real quick, because it is unfortunate, I understand that law doesn't happen here, but you all have influence, and you all have an impression, and you have not applied any pressure on Elizabeth Hertz to allow us to at least get a name, because publicly, we can't even say who killed Cello. They have yet to announce who shot the gun, who killed this man. There is a killer and a loser in our city, and y'all sitting back, and y'all ain't applying no pressure on the courthouse. But unfortunately, you all have to run this city, and you all have to oversee this city, and there are some people inside this room and outside this room that are ready to turn this city upside down. And we don't want that. We do not want that. That is not what we want, and that is not a threat. When I'm saying that, that is not a threat to anybody, but what I'm saying is, if it gets to that point, it is going to be the job of you all to clean up the mess that anybody has made. So we're asking for some more advocacy, some more support, and make some more noise so we can get, how disrespectful, how disrespectful, you to suck your teeth when I'm standing. And another thing, his fiance was arrested before the man who shot him was arrested. This woman was handcuffed, taken to county jail to sit in the holding cell, and I got a timer up here myself, and then taken to the state barracks, and she was, and his sister was arrested. The man who shot and killed him was not arrested, I work for the state. You have to fill out an incident report, so there's evidence of who shot that gun. Anytime, any situation takes place. You have to have a mental evaluation when you do something like that. How is this man still working, and we out here calling for justice and crying for justice, and we are told to be patient? And then when we come in here, we make noise, we told, "If I bang this gavel, I clear this room?" How dare you? And I don't care, I don't care what this cost you moving forward. I don't care what this cost you moving forward. If I win, if, listen, if my plan is to run in two years, and me speaking right now costs me an opportunity to be sitting in that seat, then I do not care, because what you should not be able to do is sitting up there and threatening us with abusive power because you feel like, "This is your house, this is not your house, and it is time for you to go." This is ridiculous. You should be silent.
Counsel, let me speak to counsel. Some of y'all don't know me. I'm the father of Marcello Woodard. Not one person other than Mr. Nelson and the mayor shook my hand, "Sorry for your loss." No one came by my house and helped us with the funeral. Nobody cared. They never sent flowers. I had to bury my son. Y'all spend more money taking care of animals when they die than a human being. We're talking about justice, not just us. I hold a master degree from Mercyhurst College. I was taught from Jim Kinnan to Michael Bacekow. Nobody is above the law. And it doesn't take that long to tell the Woodard's family another lie. You got to tell the Woodard's family a decision. And next time, you should respect that badge, honor, serve, and protect the community.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dr. Suzanne Kuligarski. I would like to think I'm an aspiring leader in this community. I've worked in nonprofits my entire career, I live in the city. Before I address all of you, I would just like to say my deepest condolences to the family and friends of Marcello Woodard. I did not know Marcello. I know some of you, I know some people in this crowd, and I would just like to say, for the majority of the leadership, and as an aspiring leader in this community who has worked in nonprofits for 27 years, shame on the leadership in this community. Shame on you. The, let me speak, the elected officials that sit up here, that potentially sit in this crowd, shame on you. Shame on you. It is absolutely disgusting how the family has been treated, how the community has been treated, but let's give the utmost respect and dignity and confidentiality to law enforcement because they're law enforcement. And let me just say, I work with a lot of these individuals as well, these politicians, the law enforcement and the leadership. So do I put myself on the line? Yes, I do. And that's okay, because what is right is right, and what is wrong is wrong, and you all know, you all know. You all know. What is right is right, and what is wrong is wrong. And for some of you to not step up to the plate, and I know the ones of you that have, but for those of you that have not stepped up to the plate, shame on you. It is disgusting. It is not leadership, and it is repulsive. And you know it. You do know it. And for even some of the leadership in this room to have handled a little bit of what has happened tonight, for the people who have a voice and have the right to that voice to come and speak what they want to speak at this meeting tonight and to be treated the way that they are after there has been someone murdered in our community, a citizen that has been working so hard to get their life to where they are, and to be treated like that. Some of you, some of you have a lot to learn on leadership. So I have my PhD in leadership. So if you would like a lesson, I'm happy to talk to you anytime. If you would like some advocacy on any of this, I'm happy to talk to you anytime. I'm sure that there's a lot of people in this room that are happy to talk to you anytime, because we welcome you. And we welcome others in this community that don't understand how to be kind and compassionate and caring, especially when there are people that need that and need someone to step up and help out and to support them, and especially their greatest time in need and that are grieving. And especially when it's at the hands of someone that is supposed to be helping them and assisting them. And for nothing to have been done other than a statement or two is absolutely disgusting. And you all know it. And so we need to stop protecting those that do not need protected and potentially start protecting those and helping those that need the services and need protection. So, at that point, I would like to turn this around to all of you, and I know you can't comment or say anything that probably has anything to do with anything at this point, but what are you gonna do about it? Because we are now a broken community, probably even more so than we were before. So I turn this around onto all of you, the leaders, and that's for anybody in this community. What are you gonna do about it? Because you haven't. So then, what happens then is that we have to do something about it. Us, family, friends, community, aspiring leaders, because you're not doing shit about it. So, at that point, I say, "Have a lovely evening. We will take over," because you're not doing your job. Admittedly, I came here today with a very concise, well-written statement, and I can't even give that right now. I have been working, and I'm gonna try not to get emotional, I've been working with the Woodard family and the people that love him for the past two weeks. I come from a military background. My husband works in law enforcement, okay? And his family knows this, and we have been able to help them because we are telling the truth. My husband served for 20 years. We left this city, and we came back. And I am telling you, we will never be 814-strong until we are as strong as our weakest, as good as our weakest link. And y'all right now are looking like the weakest link. For, for real. Over a 20-year period when my husband served, we served with people who were white, with black, brown. And I want to remind you, when you're prioritizing people, every single one of you have the same color blood. You all came out the same way, and you're all going out the same way. Every single one of you. The stuff that happens in between is the stuff that defines you, and the definition is not looking so great. There are so many inconsistencies to this story, and I do have a unique perspective because of the family environment that I am in. Inconsistencies on CPR that was given to a man who had his hands cuffed behind his back. You cannot do that. You ask a combat medic. You ask any physician. You ask any surgeon. You cannot provide safe, adequate CPR to somebody with their hands handcuffed behind their back. And if you did that, and if they did that, then they also could have contributed to his death by blowing out his chest. All right? When we talk about things that law enforcement families know, and that most of the population knows, doesn't know, we also talk about how parole officers, regular officers, Erie PD, PSP, military, federal, all the way up, have trainings that they must take on deadly force. It's called laser shot. It is simulated. It is classroom, and there's about 25,000 things that you learn to do before you discharge your weapon. It is a national program. So who is doing that? Because I don't, there is no way that guy passed that class. No way. I doubt that he was even taking it, because there is no way. A person could not know the information that he knew and choose that. The day after this incident, within 12 hours, Pennsylvania State Police issued a preliminary statement. With a preliminary statement, also goes something to the DA, who on, I believe Wednesday, said she had got nothing on her desk yet. They go together. Law enforcement families know that. They go together. They conducted an entire investigation from 10 o'clock in the morning to 6 o'clock in the morning in the middle of the night. Did not interview a single witness on the block, did not canvass, did not check Ring cams, did not, nothing. How is an investigation that is run so poorly with so many holes, and then you're telling us, "We're taking care of the investigation," and we know you're not, because you're not? There are way too many holes, way too many inconsistencies, way too many. I moved back here because I remember growing up in the 814 and sitting in my cherry tree and eating cherries all day long and running around at night and taking my bike to places I shouldn't have been taken that my mom still doesn't know I went. When I come back here as an adult, I was hoping for that. Y'all disappoint me. You really disappoint me. And I've lived a lot of places. I've lived a lot of places. I've seen a lot more death than probably you guys have. We've lost a lot of friends. We've lost a lot of battle buddies, and every single one of them bled red. So when you're sitting up here and you're talking about what you can do and the pressure being put on you, I would like a referendum for Justice Ficello to ask the DA immediately to release the statements and arrest the suspects. Please do not make me be embarrassed to have chosen to live here again. Please do not make me be embarrassed to live here again. Please. We went through a lot. I do not want to be embarrassed to say I'm from Erie. We are one of two places in this entire country of all time who has a parolee that was killed by their parole agent. One of two. That's some great, we're making some great names. Put that on our chalk. That's great. Please do more.
Excuse me. I didn't get your name.
Cynthia Triever.
Cynthia?
Triever. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Roberts from the east side. I don't have much to say because I feel I said enough to the community on Facebook and on the news. But what y'all don't realize, and what you do realize, is we still haven't got justice from over 400 years. And y'all tell us to wait. Y'all tell us to be patient. This ain't slavery no more. We had to wait to be able to go to the same schools as a white person. We wasn't allowed to drink out the same water fountains, use the same bathrooms, none of that. We had to wait for justice, and today we still waiting for justice because it's a killer walking around, and I'm scared. It's a lot of times y'all, y'all see us as a black community. We might kill somebody, and the first thing they want to say is, "They animals." What about this punk? What is he? Y'all label us, label him. Bring forth some charges so he can be tried in front of his peers just like I would have to be. He at home right now, watching TV with little Timmy and little Johnny or little Rebecca, whoever his kids is. That's what he doing. But yet y'all telling us to be patient. Y'all sit up here quiet. We don't get no feedback. But watch this. What do my shirt say? Can somebody tell me? They said it. Can you tell me what it say? You said it, because it don't mean nothing. But watch this. Who it means something to. What he said? I say what I mean, and I mean what I say, Justice Ficello. Do something about it.
Hi, my name is Cole Shindley. I live in the city of Erie. We all know that Erie's community is at a crossroads. It's been five years since the death of George Floyd and the global Black Lives Matter movement that sprung up in response. But here in Erie, the conversation around police reform and race relations in our city has barely moved an inch in those five years. If you look at Mayor Schimber's near-eight-year tenure, you'll see numerous surface-level commitments to ending racism in Erie, but hardly one concrete ordinance, hardly one cultural shift, hardly one change in how law enforcement is overseen in this city. If the conversation the mayor and city council wants is one filled with platitudes, they should be honest with everyone in this room and those watching this meeting online. Tell us how sorry you are that Marcelo is dead. Tell us one more time how grateful you are that his murderer wasn't an Erie police officer, as if that's something to celebrate. Don't lie and say that anything is gonna change for Erie's black community except for a gaggle of city leaders that will intensify their cries that black people in this city just need to be nicer to the police, just need to listen to them more, just need to make their feelings, make them feel good, because if you don't, they might put a bullet in you. But that conversation isn't what we want. We want real change now, not six months from now. Not six months from now, when a new administration takes over. And it's their responsibility then. Are we gonna pass the buck for six months until Dari is the mayor? Is that what we're gonna do? We demand an investigation into this, to Cello's murder. Demand an investigation, a real investigation, unbiased investigation. Yes, we need real, we need these men put in jail right now. They murdered a man. They murdered a man. There needs to be real consequences. We're gonna hear the spin. He was driving away. I had to hold on to the car, so I shot him full of bullets. We're gonna hear the spin, but be real. It didn't have to end this way. And if this city, and if this, if our state and our nationwide, if we had actual oversight over police, if we didn't treat police unions as a third rail in this city and in this, in this community so that we could actually have some control over them, so that the police chief isn't the one pulling the strings, as we all hear too often in, you know, backroom asides from our other friend politicians. I'm tired. I'm tired of this. We pay these police so much money, and there's so little oversight. And if you piss them off, they go on Facebook, and they yell, and they scream, and they cry. And I will point out that even members of this council have been, have gotten blowback and been called horrible things by their supporters. We witnessed last year a member of council who got death threats and was treated horribly because she had some problems with Republicans in the city. And apparently, the police union thought that that was a thing that they should get involved in. I'm not here to denigrate all the police, but we need more oversight. And this administration has been far too deferential. We don't need to be adversarial, but something has to change. Real things have to change. Why is there not a police oversight board, civilian review board, five years later? Even if you had to punt it in 2020, it's 2025. Rest in peace to Marcelo Woodard. I'm so sorry for his family. I hope they get justice. I hope our city heals, but you need to do your jobs and make something real happen. Thank you.
My name is Freda Tepfer. I live in the city of Erie, and I actually have multiple things I want to talk about today. I will say I was at the funeral, and I went up front, and I tried to say something to the son, and I couldn't get the words out. I just mouthed the words, "I'm so sorry," twice. I do echo the words of Nikki Page that, not necessarily to be patient, but to make sure that the investigation that does happen is thorough, because she's an experienced prosecutor and a defense attorney, and she said, "If it isn't thorough, the defense will poke holes in it." Nevertheless, there should be a charge. I agree. There should be a charge. There should be names. There should be this thorough investigation and the body cam. And yeah, you guys should consider a resolution calling for these things. Now I'm going to switch topics. Forgive me, but they matter too. I'm asking that the city council table approval of contract item number six, Empire Snow Management, the curb ramp contract. I looked through the entire 146 pages of the contract. I found nothing in there to prevent the contractor from tearing up all four corners of an intersection at the same time. There are 15 intersections on the contract that could be thus impacted. And I appreciate that the engineer did, with Leanne Parmentos' instructions, attempt to find similar contract language. What I found from AI, which I never trust before, "The contractor shall ensure that at no time shall more than two corners at any intersection be concurrently impacted by work activities that would obstruct pedestrian or vehicular traffic or hinder access to businesses or residences." And there's a little more. That's what they should do. They should pull the contract, amend it to say that it is probably gonna cost more. But I had this in my neighborhood. What the heck are people supposed to do? Walk in the street? What about the people with the wheelchairs? What about the visually impaired pedestrians? It's not appropriate. When the planning is doing the tree inventory, that's number one on the contracts, the tree inventory, that the city makes sure that one of the elements inventoried is the situation where the tree roots have buckled the sidewalk. There is new research that has, I know this doesn't sound important, but this is the only chance I have to bring this stuff up. New research has shown that how the construction materials are put in, when they put in the sidewalk, the top 12 inches, that's why the tree roots go there and explore those 12 inches. And there are alternatives to the general way that sidewalks are constructed. So as we do more construction of sidewalks, new construction of sidewalks, the city should expose themselves to this research, included in their requirements and in their contracts. I have provided this research to the important people. The city should use the transportation set-asides as an opportunity to continue to eliminate intersections with no accessible pedestrian signals. Any signalized intersections with pedestrian signals, the little light or the numbers, they can be improved with an APS with a wireless system that is relatively low cost. I request the city use their opportunity of the TA set-aside to fund additional APSs. That's about it. Okay, but please, please help this city to do a better job of managing incidents like this. I agree with Cole and the other people. Five years ago, we talked about a civilian police review board, and nothing has happened. That's probably one of the first things that you guys can influence. You don't influence the investigation and the trial, but you can influence that. Thank you.
Good evening, city council. My name is Michael Woodard. I want to start off when, I'm going to start slow and I'm going to take off. First of all, you all are sitting in your seats. This is not a nest. Every bird got to fly. So it's the people within our city is the reason why you're able to sit in this nest. I want you to understand that real clear. Okay? When you reach out to us, we're here. We are your community. We are your voters. We are your people. Every bird has to fly. So I'm going to let this be known right now. The way that you guys handle this situation will definitely be the outcome if you're holding that seat. Now let's move forward. Marcello Woodard was murdered in our city. And we're going to, we're all wondering what are you guys going to do about it? DA spoke about everything. DA put all statements out on Facebook stating this and this and this and that. Okay? We all know you guys all have this power. Okay? We don't know, I don't know what you're doing behind closed doors. Okay? But the people needs an answer from the Pennsylvania State Police. Put the pressure on them. Move forward with something. Lastly, this folk, he spoke about something that seemed like these old rules, old rules, old rules. They don't work anymore within our city. We're not going for it anymore. And if you guys do not know, this is the number one case in Erie PA right now. This is the number one case in Erie, Pennsylvania right now. If you look straight ahead, they're quiet now. And their minds is on fire though. Our hearts are on fire. Everything that we do is on fire. This will not go away. Somebody spoke on Erie News Now, this going to be, this might get swept under the rug. How dare you? How dare you? How dare you? First of all, there's not a rug big enough in the world for this to get swept underneath at all. So we asking for support from city council to support us. I'm coming calmly correctly. I want to be respectful about this, but this is disrespectful to the family, to the community. I'm asking y'all right now, is any one of y'all family within the past month or year been murdered? Has anybody in your family been murdered in the last year? Anything like that? Something that is real close. I want to be like normal or close to y'all. Right? Imagine y'all significant other can't come home because they were murdered. They can't come home. Silence of a baby in the background. You can't come home to see your child. Your child wondering where you, where you are. You're not there. You're not coming home again. We need y'all, we need y'all support. We need y'all voice. There was a statement, no, there's a video out right now where the two parole officers, one had shot and the other one said this. One had shot, told the other one to get in. First of all, visual for me. If I'm on the side of the car and I'm holding on to the side of the car and somebody take off at the car, I'm not sure if I can hold no car. He taking off, first of all, when the shot was fired, you told him, what'd you tell him? Get in. He said, "Go get in." If he was in any type of danger, if I'm on the ground here, like this, first thing he do, if he busted his gun, why didn't he go to go check up on his people that was on the ground? If he was in such danger or hurt? The video's out. The DA knows this. We all know this. Where is our statements coming from? We know that y'all ain't going to voice it right now, but I'm telling y'all, there's a, there's a sign out that says, "Justice for Cello" or "We Won't Settle." "Justice for Cello" or "We Won't Settle." "Justice for Cello" or "We Won't Settle." That means, that means more. That means more than just a statement. Erie PA been run down with racism for years, years. A lot of y'all know this. Some of y'all, some of y'all are in position right now and get in position to tuck your tail. I'm going to say it right now. You get in position, you have to tuck your tail because you're under a certain amount of, you're up there, you can't say too much stuff, right? At the end of the day, it's Justice for Cello or we won't settle. Have a good one.
I'm going to be real brief. My name is Malcolm Poulum. I'm from the west side of Erie. But I was born on 22nd and German, so I know Cello real well. When I was 18, he was nine. He used to walk up and down the street with a snotty nose, asking everybody for a dollar. So when he was murdered two weeks ago, my stomach has been in a knot ever since. I haven't been able to sleep right. I've been in constant communication with his family every day and it's a lot of people hurting. So when the district attorney put out that statement today, I felt like she spit in my face. I felt like she, she don't care about our community, but she definitely cares about hers. Because right now, we got to call it what it is. It was murder. They're protecting two murderers. I don't care what you say, how you say it. He was in a car. He was defenseless. And for two people to come up on him and unjustly take him away from his family is wrong. So for the district attorney to spit in our face, Erie, Pennsylvania should be, we're the laughingstock of Pennsylvania right now. It used to be Philadelphia because they got something going on every day. But now, it's here. My brother called me from Buffalo like, yo, what's going on up there? It's been two weeks. We haven't heard one word. The only word we getting is silence. But y'all got to understand, it's a lot of people calling us. Them dogs is barking. I don't know how long we going to be able to keep them in the cage. So as of this moment, the people behind me, me, we asking for three things and it's simple. This is real simple. We want an indictment today. We want somebody arrested yesterday. And we want a conviction immediately. Like, there's no way this should be drug out as long as it been. You mean to tell me it's cool for us to go play basketball at the basketball court, but they having the movies down there or something happened at the movies? God forbid, they going off every day on the news, the newspaper, running wild through social media? But you have your own George Floyd, your own Tamir Rice, your own Oscar Grant and your own community and nobody is saying one word. Nobody saying one word. When I tell you I haven't ate correctly, I haven't. It's unfair to our community for y'all to sit solid. Somebody got to be the voice of the people. If y'all don't step up, we going to step up. And y'all not going to like that. This is real simple. Tell them people to go do their job. Because if it was me, I would be in jail right now. No bond, no bail. Everybody would call, so I heard somebody say, they call us dogs, they call us animals. That's what I be. But if y'all paying attention to social media, they're saying, oh my God, they're having a nice time at home. They're enjoying their life. How can that be? Why do they get to enjoy their life when they took the life? I believe in the eye for eye. He should have the pity of his stomach hurting right now. It's not fair to us. It ain't fair to Cello kids. It's not fair to his dad, his mom, his sister, his cousins, his friends he grew up with, nobody. Some of y'all sitting up here is from our neighborhood. Y'all communicate with us on Facebook all the time. Now it's quiet. Now y'all act like y'all don't know us. We all grew up together. That's what I thought. It don't matter if you from the east side, the west side, upper side, downside. We lost somebody from this community in a tragic way. If you don't feel what we feel, shame on you. Shame on you. Life should not be regular for anybody no more. My life is not regular. Their lives ain't regular no more. Y'all should have to feel what we feel and I feel y'all don't feel it. So again, the dogs is barking. I don't know how long we going to be able to keep them in the cage.
Abdullah Washington, Erie PA. It was said, I'll say it right here. I'm the black man. I'm the man concurrently un and underemployed. I am the man perpetually under hatches. Anyone who can pass the civil service exam today can kill me tomorrow with complete immunity. H. R. F. Brown. It's very bleak. It's very bleak. Jesse Jackson was asked, "Why are black people so good at sports?" And he replied, "Because the rules are clear and the playing field is even." Marcello Woodard played by the rules. He did everything he was supposed to do. He had two weeks left and several beautiful children. Now we have a murder, but no perpetrator. Mayor, you started your term telling the people that you wanted to end racism. Now we can't go back in time and do anything about the primary. But you see me in the community asking people to vote. Even though you didn't expect your term to end, you and everyone else here can do something. You have the opportunity to perform one of the best mic drops that anyone's been handed. All these people, you can look at us, you can look at the community, you can look at Marcello Woodard's family as troublemakers if you want to. But they've all come here to exercise their right to pass you the ball. Mr. Witherspoon.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate all of your work, but you have an opportunity to show the people and the children of the city of Erie that there is a future here that includes justice and equity for everyone. Week after week, we're reminded that the legacy of City Hall that comes from Mayor Tulio is a nod and a wink that says, "It's in the budget." You have discretion to do things that may not be apparent to everybody. They may not be public. But I'm sure that Marcello Woodard's family is sick of feeling the type of pressure that you know nothing about. Whatever pressure you're under to not perform for these people who could become, and myself, who could become lifelong participants in this city and the democratic process, it's on you now. You have a very short period of time. You don't have a whole nother term. You're not guaranteed, no one in this council is guaranteed anything. But for this moment, right now, in Erie, Pennsylvania, in front of the Woodard family and the whole Erie community, you have an opportunity to prove, to show and prove that the city gives a damn about its residents. That the black community is important to you. This is it. This is all you get to show us that you really wanted to end racism this whole time. This is it. We just want Justice for Cello. Justice for Cello.
Marty Wachuku, city of Erie. I want to cry, not because I'm sad, because I am so overwhelmed with rage. For many years now, I've been coming to the city council and advocating for a plan to make sure that black people have better employment opportunities. A plan so that black youth could have food on their tables. A plan to make sure that black people in the city won't be pushed out or overpriced from their homes. And respectfully, Mary Schember, when you first ran for office and you made the promise that you wanted to end racism, every time I heard you say it, it made me sick. Because I never believed for a second that you were going to commit yourself to the policies to enact that reality. And here we sit here today and we have lost one of our community members and still have no policy to show for your efforts to end racism. When I first heard the news, I heard it from hearsay and I flew off the handle. I was enraged. Because five years ago, myself and many others spoke to you, Mary Schember, and your administration about making sure that nothing like George Floyd would ever hap, happen here in the city of Erie. We talked about ending chokeholds. We talked about a review board. We talked about all kinds of solutions. And what we got in return was trying to hire more black officers in the police basketball program. Do you think that solved our problems? I would say, sitting here today, it did not. I've only been black in Erie for eight years, but I've been black in Pennsylvania almost all my life. In Pittsburgh, while I was living here, Antoine Rose was shot by police. When I was in the 11th grade, Pittsburgh PD beat the living life out of a teenager my same age. I have, I'm 32 now. And since I was in high school, I've watched Trayvon Martin get killed and his murderer get away with it. George Floyd, Mike Brown, Sandra Bland, name after name after name and the name, praying that it would never impact my local community. And advocating and organizing, trying to push people with power. You all literally have a bigger platform than everyone in this room. You literally are raised on the platform. And you have the power to create an agenda and a plan to save our lives and take care of us. And we are always put in the backseat. I was there at the protest. I know who, I saw Tyler, I saw Chuck. I was there at the funeral. I was there at the repass. And I am so ashamed of not seeing our state reps. I'm so ashamed of not seeing many other elected representatives there. I have, I have no power in this situation. I can't really do anything. But show up for your community. And with the platform you have, I know that you can't go and force the district attorney to do anything about this case, but you have the power to create a police review board. You have the power to address police harassment. This year alone, it went by quietly, but I didn't miss it. This year alone, I saw this city pay out for two cases where police abused their power and abused the citizens. Why is that still happening in our city? You have the power with this bigger platform. You literally have to talk to our governor, Josh Shapiro, to address the Department of Corrections and have someone held accountable about this situation with the probation officer. You have relationship with the district attorney to pressure her to work for the people. You have bigger power than us. Utilize your power. And for the power you do have at this local level of legislation, pass some legislation to help. pass some legislation to help protect us from police violence. It's not a matter of if it will happen, it's when. We're black in America. It is our life. I've lived in America almost all my life, and it, we're always, we're scared it's gonna happen to us, whether it's we're in captivity and we're killed, or your little brother's walking down the street and he's killed. All we do is worry and worry. Stress makes you sick. So even if we don't die by the bullet, this stress is making us sick. I am stressed here and sick here, standing here, talking about someone I don't know. Do something with the power you have. Do something for the future. He was probably born in the 80s. I don't know how old he was, but I'm sure he watched Rodney King get beat up. He watched so many other things get beat up, only to lose his life this way. No one else in this city, no other child in this city deserves to grow up and think that can happen to them. Do something with your power. I beg of you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dr. Matthew White. I run White Thorns Games on 12th and State. I'm going to be uncharacteristically brief. There is nothing that I, a white, straight-looking person, could possibly say that's going to add to the absolutely overwhelming torrent of rage and righteous fury of the people behind me. I know nothing of what it means to be black in America. I've been queer in America, and I can tell you that is already extremely difficult. I can hide that, though. These folks can't hide the way they look walking down the street every single day. They can't hide the way they live their lives every single day. And being queer doesn't immediately mean that a police officer assumes you're gonna shoot them. So there's a level of tension, there's a level of betrayal on a community level that gets exhausting over time. What I'd like to speak about, though, is business, actually, related to this incident, not unrelated, because I think it'd be inappropriate of me to date, but my company's a very diverse one. We promote games from unrepresented people around the world, primarily queer, people of color, disabled people. And many of my employees, as you might imagine, are themselves black and brown Americans, queer folks, disabled folks, and indeed new Americans that have been sworn in in this office. We have several immigrant Americans as well. And what's changed in the last few years in America is that there's a profound feeling of unsafety that pervades for everybody that isn't a straight cis white person. Everybody. It's everybody. Whether you're black, you're brown, you're Muslim, you're Mexican, you're new to this country, you are afraid. And you're afraid at a federal level, of federal officers kicking your door down and murdering you while you do your job or throwing you into prison without habeas corpus. You're afraid of state officers enforcing parole and murdering you for doing nothing. You're afraid of city officers kicking you to the ground, Hannah, while you protest, and then that becomes the middle of another scandal for Erie, PA. It is exhausting and difficult to continue to do business here, as we do absolutely nothing to keep our own citizens happy and healthy. I have spent a really long time as a global business, operating in 100 countries, singing the praises of this tiny little town. I came back here seven years ago and supported Mayor Schember's campaign, which originally was to transform Erie. But as it stands, every time we are on the front page of the news for kicking a protester in the face, every time we are on federal news for parole officers being judge, jury, and goddamn executioner, every time we do one of these things, we lose pride in what is left of this city to transform. I'm just begging, I understand political capital is a thing. I understand you're sitting on a six-month remaining ticking time window, where ultimately, like seniors in university, it's time to just phone it in and get it over with. But there is a moment here where you can say something that will actually make people think Erie matters. It can matter in a way that Minneapolis failed to matter. It can matter in a way Kentucky failed to matter. It can matter in a way that every other city where a black person was murdered by a law enforcement officer didn't matter. So again, I don't mean to just add my white, uninformed voice to the rage, but there's really an opportunity here to do something, and I really, really hope you choose to. Thanks.
Hello, Mr. Witherspoon, Dr. Titus. Hello. I just wanna say, I know your hearts, I do. But, like someone else said, by the way, I'm Treasure. Y'all know me. Sorry. I know your hearts, and I, like someone else said, you are not powerless. You have more power than we do, sitting here. As you can see, like I can see, every day there's a protest. It gets thinner and thinner. Our voice is but so big. I have probably had, everyone's calling Marcelo a criminal. I'm one too. I've probably had more encounters with the police than he has. I probably got a warrant right now. I don't, I don't deserve to be shot and killed in a car. I don't deserve it. No one deserves it. No one deserves to be shot and killed by a probation officer, by a police officer, by a civilian. No one deserves it. And if you could kinda get past the wanting to protect your own, because my grandmother always said, "Birds of a feather flock together." So even though your hearts may be filled with, we can't see that. And I also learned in one of my classes that when, you can tell by someone's demeanor when they're listening to you. You can tell by someone's demeanor when they're really, they wanna understand what you're saying, when you're, they're heartfelt. And I can say about out of half the people up here, y'all tired of hearing us already. Y'all better get to doing something, because y'all gonna be hearing a lot more. Y'all gonna be hearing a lot more. Like I said, I'm a criminal. Don't arrest me after this, though. But, every, everybody up here, everybody up here saying, or you might feel the same way, because like I said, I, I'm just, because y'all have a voice. Y'all are way more powerful than we are. Way more powerful. One tweet, one status will go a mile away. A mile away. We, we trying. We trying. We, we trying. We hurt. His mother, his children, his siblings, the people who are close to him. Every day, they have to accept the fact that this happened to him, right in front of their eyes, right where he grew up. But yet, they coming down every day, they, they're doing protests with, with no voice at all. They, they still just, they wanna be heard. Okay? We just wanna be heard. And I want y'all to know, regardless of what his record says on paper, I don't know what this is, but no matter what the record say on paper, we just gonna take that, we gonna throw that away. Because I'm not Marcelo for being an amazing father to his children. Amazing fathers, amazing father to his children. I don't care what his records say. I don't care why that parole, I don't know. They say in the newspaper that it was, um, a compliance check. I don't know the law like that. I probably should check into it after this. Doesn't that happen at your home? Does that happen at the park? Does that happen in the middle of the street, where you're not even completely pulled over? Can a parole officer pull you over? Like I said, I don't know. I don't know. And, and, we don't know, we don't know. We, we assuming, because y'all ain't telling us nothing. So I'm gonna assume, and I hope y'all don't arrest me after this, but, uh, I'm gonna assume that Aaron Osborne and Kevin Seelinger, or whatever his name was, I'm gonna assume that those are the people who did this, since y'all not telling us nothing. And I'm gonna make an ass out of myself for this one. So Aaron Osborne and Kevin Seelinger, or whatever your name is, I don't know y'all hearts. I don't know, I don't know y'all hearts. I know your heart, Dr. Titus, I do. I know your family. And Dr. Witherspoon, I've known you all my life. And I know there's only so much you can do, but you are more powerful than all of us put together. My hate is not towards anyone up here, but I know that you can, you can do something. One, one status, justice for Cello, can go a mile away. You have more power than all of us sitting here. We're not asking you to turn into Malcolm X or anything. We're just asking you to help us in this fight for justice for Cello. That's all we asking you to do. That's all we asking you to do. And he had three, and he had three beautiful kids who love him dearly, and they deserve to know what happened to their father. No assumptions, no nothing. They deserve to know what happened to their father. Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Cliff Crosby. I'm, uh, born and raised in Erie. I know a lot of people sitting in front of me. And I, I wouldn't want y'all job right now. The mayor, and, you know, we talk, we, you know, I got a key to the city from you. I'm benost to me, and I appreciate you for that. And Mr. Witherspoon, I've known you a long time, Mo True, Mr. Brzezinski, this side, y'all know all y'all. And this is, you know, I'm in town to work with some kids. I don't work with a lot of adults. I'm, I'm only interested in the kids. I'm only interested in saving the community, and that's the way I believe to go. And my message today is, is I listened. I saw things on Facebook. I saw things. And I'mma echo some things that some people said, whether I agree with them or don't, but my message is to the community. And it, and it's to the community because I see my people suffering. It's a fractured community. Y'all fractured. It's deeper than Marcelo Woodard. It's deeper than Marcelo Woodard. We've been fractured. We've been hating each other. We've been against each other. It's deeper than Marcelo Woodard. But he has to be the culprit to get us where we need to go. And my people, in addition to a protest, we gonna need a prayer test. You gonna have to pray. Because if you think this gonna be fair, you gonna need a miracle. You gonna need a miracle. And, 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 and some of us are speaking from anger, and you got to understand laws and words. If I tell you I'm gonna do a thorough search of this building right now, and you ask me how long, guess what I'm gonna tell you? I don't know. It's thorough. Right? Nah, I'm talking the way I wanna talk. You talk how you talk. I'm a grown man. I ain't no kid, bruh. But I'm, I'm, I'm talking to my community. I'm here for you, I'm here for you, Mr. Woodard. And I'm talking to my brothers and sisters. I grew up with y'all.
Excuse me. Hold on.
And all I'm trying to say, bruh,
Hello? Excuse me.
All I'm saying is, I'm talking to them. They listening, but I'm talking to my community. I don't get to see many of y'all in this manner. And if y'all feel like I need to talk to them, that don't matter. I'm still talking to you. Because we need justice, and I know that's the purpose. While I'm here for that, it wasn't nothing stopping me from coming in here today. I'm here for a whole different reason. But I said, I know Shan, I know Samaje, I know Trent. I gotta come here for the people still living. And our community is fractured. And all we asking for city council is that you have the access to the people and the information. And they asking for you all to just get that access and use it. Because at some point, you heard Malcolm pull you. At some point, this ain't gonna be peaceful. It ain't gonna, see, they coming for me, and I'm here to help. I'm here to help. I ain't here for no divisiveness. I'm here for my community. But see, I'm, I'm smart enough to not go back and forth. We, we, this is disappointing to my people. The trust is being lost every day that this investigation happens. Every day. The trust is getting thinner and thinner. And all I'm saying is, the stress is killing our community right now. And they're frustrated, and they don't have any answers. They don't know where to turn. And for me, it's hard to sit back and see it, because I usually don't wanna be in any type of chaos, dysfunction, but it's dysfunction going on, and we want answers. Because if it was my brother, I would want answers. I wrote a letter to a judge before, on Cello behalf. Go Ashitaria. She called me, "'Cause, can you write this letter to the court? It'd go a long way if you write the letter." Go, go pull my record. I'm here for my people. But I also need to talk to my people. When you say you want this justice, just understand it come, come with a price. Just understand, my people. But you also gonna need to pray. Because we gonna need each other, and we don't need to be divided. I'm here for us, and I'm getting chastised by my people. And I ain't got nothing to do with nothing. I'm here for my people. I'm hurt that y'all hurt. I'm hurt that Mr. Woodard's hurt. I don't want that pain. And I don't want that pain again. So all I'm asking is, meet with the right people and get some answers for the family, because I don't need the answer, but that man right there needs some answers. That man right there needs some answers. Cello mom needs some answers. Cello's kids needs, nah, that man right there needs some answers. His kids need some answers. And they asking for us to do something, and elected officials, they leaning on y'all. They counting on y'all position to just get them some answers. And I know this family, I know this community, and I'm hurting. I'm heartbroken because my community is broken. And that's all I gotta say. I'm not gonna waste no time and get chastised. Justice for Cello.
Michael Keys, Erie, Pennsylvania. First of all, I just, um, like to give Mr. Woodard my condolences personally. I did not know your son personally, but, um, I grieve, you know, when the community grieves. And the community is grieving right now. And no person should lose their life at the hands of a parole agent. You know, uh, the, the job of a parole agent is supposed to help you to acclimate back to the world when you get released. And I see no way how this sits within their, within their mission to help people get back to regular life. And I'd also like to say that, you know, we need justice for Cello, but we also need justice for everybody in this room. Not just on this particular incident, but, you know, um, in 2019, Erie was named the worst city in America for black people to live in. And we, seven of these years later, Mr. Mayor, if we ran this statistics again, it's probably still one of the worst places in America for black people to live. And, you know, when I came down to, you know, City Hall today, I was looking for a parking spot, so I went around the park, and I see $50 million over here, and I see no million dollars over here. If you wanna end racism, you need to open up the purse strings and pour some money where we live, in our community. That's how you end racism. You know, some people said, one said that nothing stops a bullet like a job. You know what I'm saying? I've heard statistics. I can't validate them, but someone said that 25% of the black men do not have proper employment in this community. If that is true, sir, you are not ending racism. Poverty has gone up over the last six years, not down. And so whatever happens here and here, we need more resources, we need more intentionality, we need you to do something for us. You know, when I was on the panel, you know, we passed a resolution to put money into the Roger Young Park. You never put the money into the park. You never put the money into the park, sir. And people, these people live over there. They play football on the crooked field. It matters to these people. And so I'm asking you, in your last six months, put out an RFQ and put, put out an RFQ to have the Roger Young upgraded. That's the minimum you can do for the people here who are hurting, is to give them something that's tangible, that they can use. that's tangible, that they can use in the future. Thank you.
City Council, Mayor. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Sidney Zimmerman. Um, I came here for a different reason, but when I saw what was going on, I knew I needed to read the room. Um, I'm still here for an issue that affects the lives of those in our community, but this time, it is smaller than the reason this room is filled tonight. So, I need to take time to recognize the issue for which this room is filled. Like my friend Abdullah said when I came in, we need to take time to focus on this homicide, as the DA has called it herself. You know, at home, we often do things differently than we do at work. If you're a food worker, you may make the meal with more love, or as a cleaner, you may take more time to get the in-between a bit better. But as a community leader, there should be no difference in the amount of love, patience, and care you put into your work here. We live together, we work together, we deserve our leaders to treat our community as loved ones. The DA in her statement asked for patience. We deserve patience. We deserve care. As Mike said, we deserve intentionality. Mr. Woodard's loved ones, friends, and family are here to show their pain and their anger at the senseless loss of his life. It should also be your pain and anger. This community is your loved one. Treat this death as the death of your loved one. Apply pressure as you would if it was one of your family members. Let me be clear, this issue affects me much differently as a white woman. But regardless of what our race is, what our sexuality is, whatever it is, this affects us all. Whether or not we knew him, whether or not we lived in his neighborhood, he is a member of our community, so his safety is our safety. If he wasn't safe, then nobody is safe. Marty brought up the fact that there have been those of us who come here with regularity, pleading, bringing solutions, possible ideas, possible policies that could be enacted. They haven't. I know that this happened with a state parole officer, but our city officers are paid hun, thousands of dollars, some of them hundreds of thousands of dollars. Our money.
Our money!
On the side of the car, it says, "Protect and Serve." Protect and serve who? Protect and serve what? Property or people? This past year, there's about 43 million out of about 173 million dollars that went to the police? I don't think that includes overtime. The money is there, the resources are there for us to enact a change. Mayor Shember, we ran together. I, I knew I was not gonna win that race. The reason that I stepped up to run is because I, we needed to change the conversation. We needed to bring forth... We needed to bring forth the issues that are affecting people, and not just people in Frontier, and not just people in Glenwood Heights. People in our city, not just the Bayfront, where we've opened up our opportunity zone to Nick Scott and others. No, we are the ones who need opportunity. We are the ones who need protection. And I know that your term is coming to an end, Mayor Shember, and some of you on council. I know your term is coming to an end, and that can make people feel powerless. But let me say that this is the time that you can be most powerful. You can be most powerful without repercussion. You don't have to worry. You're leaving. You can do this. People aren't gonna, you're not gonna have to worry about what happens after November. It's done. So, we know that you are not the DA, we know that you are not the State Parole Board, but you are the mayor of Erie, and y'all are the city council folk of Erie. You can advocate. Advocating. Exactly. Advocating, there is power in bringing the issues to light. Progress can come from the loss of this beloved life. So bring it. Bring the progress to the people who deserve it.
Hello, I am Stephen Perry. I live in the city of Erie. I also came here to speak on a different issue tonight. I'll briefly touch on that mainly just because I do think it somewhat ties into some themes discussed today. Um, I initially came to speak in support of the changes to Article 7 of the zoning code to change how the Historical Review Commission operates. As part of that, one of the major changes, it allows the citizens and the people to be able to determine and nominate something as a city of Erie historic landmark. Right now, we have certain zones designated. The one that I think is relevant for this conversation's problem be West Sixth Street. West Sixth Street, Millionaires Row, that's all currently declared as being a historic district within Erie. However, the area just north of Sixth Street, west of Sassafras, is not. That area was originally known as New Jerusalem, and that's where the earliest African-Americans within the city of Erie lived. That is not part of that historic district, but that is still part of the history of the city of Erie. That is where many former slaves on the underground rural roads stopped on their path to freedom. Other areas, like US Bregnaugre, is also not considered to be historic, even though a full 38 years before the city was founded, African-Americans served on Naugre as equals. Today, they are not living as equals in the city of Erie. So I do like the changes to Article 7, because it allows the people, not the HRC, not city council, it allows the city and the people to determine what they consider to be historic. Now, I did not come here initially to talk, to talk about Cello, but I feel obligated to do so. I think there's a couple other things here that are worth calling out. So yes, it was a parole officer who murdered him. Yes, it was not the Erie police. But what steps are we currently taking to reform the Erie Police Department? Are we going to demilitarize the Erie Police Department? Are we gonna stop the militarization of the Erie Police Department? Are we going to increase the amount of community policing? Are we going to try and shift the bond system within the city of Erie so it's more equal for everyone? And just to tie this again to other topics that are on the agenda tonight, I know you said you are not able to respond to us directly. However, I do think there are items on the agenda tonight that are relevant. Namely, I do wanna call out underneath the new business item two, which is an attempt to have an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Port Authority on paving Ravine Drive. Where does Ravine Drive go? The Erie Yacht Club. So right now, the city of Erie is prioritizing an agreement to improve paving to the Erie Yacht Club. Where did the, the city of Erie not prioritize just 70 years ago? The McBride Viaduct. Here we are prioritizing our resources to allow some of our wealthiest citizens to be able to go to the Yacht Club. Are we able to redirect some of that funding to go elsewhere? I ask you right now, you have the ability to change how you're gonna handle that agreement with the Port Authority. Are you gonna let the wealthy people at the Yacht Club pay for the paving on their own? They can afford it. Instead, redirect that funding elsewhere. It can be done tonight. You're considering it, it's on your agenda. That's just one small step you can take in the moment to change how the city is treating its citizens. Um, I grew up in Wattsburg, I didn't grow up in Erie, I now moved, I left Erie, I came back. I am currently considering if I wanna stay in Erie. I'm privileged, I'm a white male, I have a good-paying IT job, I can work remotely, I'm looking at buying a house. I'm one of those people who could get a membership to the Erie Yacht Club if I wanted to. I say this not because I want special treatment, because it seems like you and the city of Erie treat people of me better than you do everyone else. If you want people like me to stay, treat everyone here better.
That's right.
Everyone here in this room is a bigger reason of why I wanna stay than any of the actions I have seen by the city while I've been back in the city of Erie. These people here are the reason I want to stay, not anything I have done, seen done by the city itself. I just ask you, please do better. Make it a spot where people wanna come, where people wanna live, where everyone feels equal and everyone has equal opportunity, and use your resources as you can to help everyone and not people trying to drive to the Erie Yacht Club.
Hello, my name is Terry Williams. I'm from the east side of Erie. I live on a street where Cello, um, was murdered at. I'm not gonna sit here and give a speech like everybody, because I feel the same way everybody else in this crowd do, and they ain't said nothing that I wanna say. However, one thing that I do wanna say, that I haven't heard been said, is, as a black mom raising black grandkids and raising a black son, what is the protocol that I'm supposed to tell them when they get pulled over with a gun already pointed at them? Are they not supposed to pull off? Are they not supposed to get back in their car? What is the protocol that they're supposed to do? Because I can guarantee you that if it was any one of my kids or anybody else out here, they were gonna pull off as well. So you tell me what we supposed to do.
Hi, my name is Tamika Smith. And, um, I knew Cello all my life. Uh, when I woke up to the news that, uh, he was killed by a parole officer, I said, uh, I never heard of nobody being killed by a parole officer. Um, I done been to all the protests, that's why I'm wearing a boot now, because the police pushed my daughter down and twisted my ankle. Um, the police, badge 486, pushed my daughter down, and that's why I'm on a boot right now. Nine. So, you know, I tried to reconcile with them, but you get nowhere with them. Cello was not, he was not a bad person at all. Actually, he was a helping person. And I don't understand why we haven't got any answers, but we got posters with the POs on it. Why there hasn't been no arrests? If it was one of us, we would've been arrested. While our investigation was going on, we would've still been in a cell, waiting on the outcome. So I just wanna say that I hope in your hearts that y'all can find a resolution that we can get Justice for Cello, because he deserves it. This man was changing his whole life. He was going to the gym, he was with his kids. I seen it. I seen it on pa, I seen it on Facebook. I'm pretty sure y'all did too. He went to church. He was changing his life. And if he shot three times? I heard the shots. Three times. I didn't hear nobody being dragged. I didn't hear no skirt, none of that. So, the, whatever, the statement that they gave that he was dragged, no he wasn't. He was not dragged. It's too many videos out here, and I'm pretty sure y'all done seen them. This man did not deserve that. He deserved to be here right now with his kids, changing like he was. And I just wanna say, Justice for Cello.
My name's Jerry Jenkins, live in Erie, Pennsylvania. Know a couple of y'all. I'm here today to talk to the elected officials, just to give y'all a reminder of what the people here, we want Justice for Cello. And you asked us, what is Justice for Cello? Well first, I wanna say this. Y'all, as our elected officials, also were sworn in the duty to protect, uphold our constitutional rights against anything foreign or domestic. And this is domestic. And yes, one voice don't go that far. We come to y'all as the people that we elected to speak for us.
Right!
And the justice we wanna know, even though you said you can't respond back, the justice that we deserve and that Cello deserves is, this is not an accused murderer, this is a murderer. So there's no accusations. I wanna just let y'all look at this crowd behind me. Some of these people are victims, mothers, fathers of murdered sons, murdered brothers and sisters amongst our own community. So we would know what justice that we would like, because we issued this justice on our own kind. And at the end of the day, a parolee is still a citizen. He still has rights. Not just because you're on parole or probation, that does not mean we're still a warden of the state. We come to y'all and ask y'all to do what y'all can do. We, of course, we know you're not the DA, you're not the judges and the police and things like that, but what we do know is, y'all have the voice, the power. This is y'all city. Y'all sit on city council. If anything goes wrong in this city, it comes to y'all first. This is the most important thing in Erie, Pennsylvania, right now.
Right now!
Right now. There should be nothing else. Time, dedication spent. When you came in the office, y'all signed something that was called a COC. That's a Code of Conduct. And the conduct we see now from any office, no statements, no anything, small, brief, little inquiries. Y'all do not abide by that Code of Conduct to uphold anyone's rights, anyone's constitutional This is a murder. This made one of the worst scenes all over the world with a Facebook. Real gruesome. And for us to sit back as a city and not address the issue, we have a lot of questions, but them questions might not be for y'all. But we can give you the questions for you to go ask the people that you control on this city council. So, the best thing I could say was that if you really wanna help us, you would be our voice. Ask the people, what questions do you want answered? There's no problem with asking, because you don't know if you don't ask. So if y'all would take time out, each and every one of y'all, and just ask the people, 10, 15 minutes of y'all time, to say, hey, what questions would you like me to, what, what issues do we have with this? And you've heard a lot of them, and I know a lot of y'all can't answer them, because like I say, it's a, it's a Code of Conduct that y'all have to follow and rules and regulations. We understand that as people. However, when there's a greater picture, some things just have to be put to the side. Your budget cuts, whatever you have to do, that should not be bigger than this picture right now. This could cause a great commotion amongst y'all city. And I don't believe that y'all wanna have to go there. I know y'all are elected officials, y'all only got a little bit of certain time mayor and all of that, but the people should be your priority and the oath that you swore to, to uphold our constitutional rights against anything foreign and domestic. And that's all I gotta say.
Hello. My name is Terry Twilley. And I just wanna say, I'm so full of emotion right now. I don't know what to do. When I think about some things, like, um, on July 2nd, 1964... When I think about some things, like on July 2nd, 1964, I believe, they passed a civil rights bill they was doing for people's rights, so they can be civilized people just to have civil things. This bill was passed years before I was born. And when they say there's nothing new under the sun, well, I think we can make something new under the sun. We can make the fact that we can change the wrongs, we can right the wrongs from the past. Because if we keep living, we live in the past, we should be better, we have the technology, all the things that we need to make things different. We can go far back as we can, like I can watch Malcolm X on videos, and I can watch him all like I was at his speeches. But we didn't learn nothing from them, because we still dying the same way we was dying way back when. I don't want to continue to keep dying. Like, when I watched things, like, whenever I watched, like, when I watched George Floyd, I couldn't breathe, because I had to watch that, because it's something that you can't ignore, especially when you have males in your family. And then it's not even only just the males, it's the females in your family, because they killed them too. So, what are we gonna do as an Erie society? And I want to say that, that the murder brought out all the other things that's going on in this community that has been sick, like it's been sick. You gotta, when you're black, you gotta leave to live, because they won't, nobody let you live here. They pay men like little boys, and they got little boys at home, so who are they supposed to look up to? When they, there's just so many things that you can say, it's so hurtful. Like, I wish I wasn't such an emotional person, but I am, that's just who I am, that's just who I am as a person. When I looked at that, it's hurt me so bad. Like, when I woke up, that was my birthday, July 2nd was my birthday, and how I handled the end of my night was to look at somebody get murdered on Facebook. On the day, I mean, that's just some terrible stuff. Like, what is the women supposed to do? Like, what are we supposed to do when we have to look up and see our babies suffering? Like, we watched the little boys, they're precious little boys at first, but then when they get big, they're so hated. So what do we do? Like, what is it we're supposed to do? Because we gotta live here too. Somebody told me one time, I went to school, I graduated, they said, how come you didn't move? And I asked them, how come they didn't move? Like, they asked me, why didn't I move? Like, it was a thing that I must do. But why do I have to leave here to live? Why can't I live here? Why can't we live here and feel like we free? Because I swear I don't feel free. I wake up in the daytime and I look around, and I look all around me, and I look up the street and down the street, and it don't take me far. It don't take me long to see oppression and pain and hurt and tears, it don't take me long at all. So, all I'm saying is, Marcella was my cousin, I didn't know him, but Marcella was my cousin. I feel the way I feel because my brother left this earth and I never got the answers that I felt like I needed. I woke up and every day I always had questions, so when I hear somebody say, I want answers, there's people out here that still need answers. We still cry because the people we love is hurting. My mother ain't never been the same. So I already know that this is something that is, it's gonna last a long time. It lasts a long time, that's all I can say. And I pray, I pray for each and every person. I saw, looked on the, on the Facebook, and I saw where they arrested his sister. Like, how do you arrest a sister? How? How do you arrest somebody and take them downtown after somebody did something to their loved one? Well, I'm just saying, because we are the criminals first. We are the criminals first. We ain't never the innocent first, we are the criminals first. Something needs to be done, a whole bunch of changes need to be changed. There needs to be some love around here instead of the hate that we get. And Center City, Center City gets no money. They don't do nothing to change the environment in the cities that we live in.
Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Bob Strasser, lifelong resident, lower east side of Erie. First, I want to extend my condolences to Mr. Woodard and his family, and all the family members and friends of Chello. And just want to let everyone know that I am very, very moved in seeing how our city is hurting right now. I don't mean any disrespect by talking about another topic tonight, that's why I kind of waited till the end to come up and talk. So, the main reason I came today was hopefully a big positive change for Erie and a big financial hopeful boost for Erie, in that yesterday there was a big PA Energy and Innovation Summit held in Pittsburgh, where Senator McCormick was responsible, big part in putting it together, the president, a lot of politicians, a lot of big corporation CEOs and important people throughout the country and the world were there. And they made an announcement that they are going to be investing $92 billion in Pennsylvania. So I kind of look at it, Erie, where we are in the ranking of cities, that we should probably be able to get maybe $5 to $6 billion of that for the different projects that they're looking to do. So some quick facts that they presented was that $56 billion will be in new energy infrastructure, $36 billion will be in new data center projects, and there will be more for that to be announced in the weeks to come. There's $15 billion investment from Nighthead Capital Management, and they're looking to put a plant in Homer City, Pennsylvania. Google is investing in hydropower plants in Pennsylvania, and billions by Google are being invested in that. Westinghouse is going to be building 10 new of the more modern nuclear plants to provide energy. Mainly, a lot of this is being done to grow the AI industry, but Erie needs to be a part of that. They also stated that in the future, there could be an additional $60 billion coming. So I was able to get some answers between, a couple days ago when I first learned about that, but I got some answers today about where Erie was, but unfortunately, I only heard about Erie County. I don't know if there was any representation from the city of Erie there, but I did hear that the county executive and some people from the county were down there and working out, hopefully, some good deals for the county. But my question is, is what is the city doing to get our slice of pie for this that could be very, very transformative for the city of Erie? And since I'm from the east side, I'm going to plug that maybe some of these projects could be done on the east side to provide jobs that people are looking for and make us a leader as AI continues to grow, which, as a lot of you know, I've been coming the last couple years, talking and promoting about AI, and now here we have Pennsylvania looking at $92, $93 billion to start with. We need to get our share of that. So, like I said, I'll be continuing to come in the future and give more updates. There's a lot, lot of advancements taking place. There's the new Grok 4 that's supposed to be game-changing. So we're probably looking at going from the AGI stage to the ASI stage, probably within the next three to five years, when originally, it was predicted we wouldn't get to ASI, artificial superintelligence, till 2080. So we're looking at being 50 years ahead, and I'm still going to continue to ask and prompt the people in government for Erie, let's go get our share of it and make Erie a better place. Thank you, and I hope that adds a little positive stuff. I also, before I leave, want to plug the Love Your Block program, which is doing well again this year too. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
May I suggest that we waive the rules and address the people that are in the lobby and instead waiting until committee report, because I don't believe that they want to wait through our zoning laws, bonds, and contract discussion.
Okay.
You want to give me one minute? I'll holler at them and tell them to get back in here, and we could take a minute to address their concerns.
Why not? Is that okay with you guys?
I have motion on the floor to waive the rules, sponsored by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Flores, to address the public now instead of waiting until committee Voting on the resolution, Mr. Wazinski, Flores, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon.
When we do not respond on yes or no, our silence means yes.
Kathy, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I gave you a yes.
Well, I'll go first. I appreciate the continued outcry from our community over these last two weeks. I think when Malcolm said, he challenged us to feel what you feel, and, you know, Marcella's not someone I know personally, so I know that I will not feel what many of you feel. But what I do feel here that I believe you feel is helpless. And I think, as was reiterated by many of you, I think you understand that we are helpless here. And what I do offer is that I hope to amplify the voices that you cry with to those that have the ability to change it, that have the ability to hear it. You know, this is something that ends up being out of our jurisdiction, ends up being something that our police don't get to touch. And while many of you offered different solutions that you, you know, that you feel have not been addressed, you know, those are some things Citizens Review Board, that was discussed. If you want to see what that looks like, Harrisburg has the best example, we've got a draft up of 15 pages that is simply impotent. It will also make you feel helpless. Our code requires that, basically, council doesn't have any say over that, and the best Citizens Review Board in our state, the citizens get to make a recommendation to council, that then council stops hiring new cops, and that's the most power that can be influenced on it. It's still powerless, it's still impotent, that's why we didn't move with it. You know, I've seen the videos you've seen, I've seen the names shared, I've seen the pictures shared. You know, we mourn with you. And I want to make that clear, that we mourn with you and that we will hopefully amplify your voice, because this community does hurt.
We feel you mourn, that you mourn with us, because you hit the ground running with us, and Tyler, you hit the ground running with us, with the tentacles of ground, that's what we want to feel, we want to see that. That's what makes us feel like y'all here, but, Mr. America, you were there, Erie, you were there. The ones that become tentacles with us, brothers, our own, or it can't, that's the basis of it, that's what we want to feel, you know what I'm saying? That's where we feel like our roots are being mended. Thank you.
So, I appreciate you guys continuing to show your passion for this, and I hope to continue to amplify that. Thank you.
Mr. President? I've rewritten this statement like five times as I'm sitting here and writing down everyone's name. I just want to start with, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I've been quiet out of fear, because my wife is not a citizen, and I was told that I needed to stay quiet, but that is a false, naive sense of safety, and I'm sorry. I'm going to say it with my full chest, I'm in this, and I will be as loud as I can. I will be as loud as I can. And I'm asking our current mayor, and our future mayor, please, please, hold this hurt and understand this pain and take action. This cannot, this cannot continue. This can't continue. And I have been, I've been off of social media, I came back on the night that I found out this happened, because it's the only way I knew how to get in touch with anybody. I'm here, my number is 814-790-8193. And I will push, as loud as I can push, and I will hold this with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we got you. We got you. You want to tell us what?
We got you.
We got you.
I told you, I know your heart, I know your family, love them very well. I know your heart, I know it.
I just want to address the crowd that, a lot of us council people, we do ask questions behind the scenes, and we email, and we find out things, and sometimes we're not able to publicize it as broadly as we need to, but I know that that day when I found out that that happened, that next morning, I didn't find out until the following morning, but I messaged Chuck and I messaged Tyler, and I said, hey, can we find out what happened, who did it, and who's accountable? And when we found out it wasn't the police department, we're kind of limited. So what we can do and what we can say is just reach out to the DA and say, hey, we would like a transparent investigation, make sure you do everything that we need, because right now, we have a community that's hurting, we have a community that doesn't feel like they're heard, they're not spoken. I'm a brown woman, I'm half Mexican, half Puerto Rican, so I get it. I have brothers who get chased by the police and who get questioned first before they're proven innocent. So for me, right now, I'm working six days a week, I'm in the process of moving and buying a house, I got a lot of things going on, but I try to make sure that when things are tragic in the community, that I know who to address the community to and who could give the proper answers. Now, we are going off of the information that the DA gave us, and I seen the message today too, which I thought was a little bit insulting, because it's been two weeks. But at the same time, we're coming into a meeting with an agenda that we're trying to focus on to continue city business, so we don't get to communicate with all of the other governing bodies. Now, the DA is an elected official position, she's going to be on the ballot as well, judges are on the ballot as well. I'm ecstatic that you all want to be more politically involved, because that's what we need. In order for us to get the justice that we want and we deserve, we need more people that look like us in these rooms, making these decisions, advocating for our community. So until I was in the room, I was, there were no brown or Latino people having the conversations. And I know that Mel Witherspoon and Mo Troop, we are representatives of the community of color. But when we're the only voices speaking on issues, it's hard. So to see the community organize and speak on justice for Chello, this is what we need, and I'm hopeful that we are going to get the justice that we deserve, because the community is not happy, and I'm hoping that whoever is And I'm hoping that whoever is in charge of these decisions that were at the DA's office is watching our meeting because this is a great example for the record on how our community feels so people can't say that they don't know how people feel. So, you know, I apologize that I'm not able to make it to things. I am working six days a week right now in order to be able to qualify for a loan for my house. So things come prioritized wise, but I'm asking questions, and I'm sending emails, and that's all I have right now. So I apologize that it's not more. But if it was the police department that did it, we would be asking those questions to the mayor and our police chief and what we have power to do. Just know that because I'm somebody who, I had a letter issued from the Fraternal Order asking me to resign because they didn't like that I said that the MAGA trap supporters were racist. So in order for me to do my job, I'm happy the community is stepping forward and being vocal because we need this. They need to see that we're not going away, and there's a lot more people of color in our community than we're being represented wise. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Also asked Dan Lawton's office to pass SB 1278 so that state parole agents can also have body cams. He exceeded the supervisory jurisdictions. He was an armed individual. He was no longer supervisor. He enacted a executor role. And now you are relying, you are putting the onus on us as black people again to provide new evidence for a murder. He should have been the primary evidence provider by having a cam on him so that we could have that footage. But now we have to rely on ring cameras and statements that we know are going to be twisted because they're operating under an inevitable system. Here's what else we can do. We have submitted several, like in excess of 29, right to no requests, several to the Erie Police Department who are delaying any answer for 30 days.
I got the message.
For 30 days.
We submitted it already.
Just because they want to check it out. They want to make sure they can release them. We have access to body cam. If, if the parole or the probation officers, put in parole officers didn't have, which we have heard they did, we have heard they did from some pretty good reliable sources, whose parents are in some pretty high sources in Erie. Why are we not getting footage from Erie PD? Is it because they actually maybe didn't do CPR? Is it because there's stuff on there that we need to not be able to see? They're not even providing the information.
And his girlfriend was in the car. He eyewitnessed.
Yeah. Like, everybody who knows me, no, I'm not like, what we just did right here, to me, this is about show. This is, this is, this is like a show. This could have been done a whole nother way. And I'm, I'm never a person that's out to just make myself look good with a situation. And I felt like this is what this was right now. And I really don't appreciate that right now, to be honest with you. You know, I, I, this ain't the time to try to make yourself look good. You know what I mean? Nah, this, the waiving the rules right now, to me, that was done to make somebody look like they're a hero right now. And I don't believe it should have been done. My plan was to contact some people that I know I have the direct numbers to. I didn't need to tell you that. I, I can do, I can do, I can do that myself. Contact those people, which I, which I plan to do, which I plan to do. But what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, this right here, but this, this right here was, was, but if, if it's done, if it's done with the right purpose in heart, not to make myself look good, to make y'all think I'm your hero. And that's what I think this was right now. And I'm just telling you that. Now, now, listen. Now, what I'm saying is that this, this whole thing at the end here, because they, this never, this at the end. What I'm saying is, the people that's in here right now, the Roberts brothers, I've been knowing them my whole life. I will be in contact. I didn't need to tell the whole world that. I'm going to be in contact with you. You know what I'm saying? I'll be in contact. All right, Trent, I'll be in contact. Mr. Woodard, I'll be in contact with him. You know what I mean? Like I said, I, this thing here at the end was, was about, was about, it had the wrong, wrong, wrong heart.
I think that they were just trying to show us that they hear us because we feel us.
I, I hear you, too. I, I, listen, listen. I got, like, somebody said, people ain't listening to you? Look at, all this, this is filled with stuff that people said today. You know what I mean? That's all I'm saying. We, we don't want to, we don't want to do things to try to make ourselves look good. Not, not in a situation like, in a situation like this, I don't believe that we should do things to try to make our, to, to, to try to gain some, some fame off of it. You know what I'm saying? I do, I do want to end with this. 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 All, all I'm saying is.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Is this citizens to be heard?
No, what I'm saying is, I, I don't think that.
Okay.
I think that this was, this was done.
This is weird.
To make certain people look good.
I get it. I get it. I get it. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
But I'll be, but I.
Okay, um, is this, is this?
I'll be, I'll be.
Okay, we're going to try to get, we're going to try to, we're going to try, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Hey, hey, hey.
I'm sorry.
Hey, I assure you, he's not, he's not talking about you. Don't take offense to this. You're fine. You're fine. Please, 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 please keep order to this.
If we don't keep some order, they're going to adjourn the meeting.
Excuse me.
So can we just be, so this is supposed to be the citizens to be heard?
No, 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 we ended that portion. We ended that portion. I messed it up.
So then you do have a list of people that want to be, that need to speak.
We, we went through citizens to be heard, and then we, and we finished it.
Hey, Mike, let me talk to you when we leave.
So can, I just wanted to.
Let me talk to you when we leave. All right?
All right, let me say my.
No, but I want to talk to you before you leave today. Because like I said, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, like I said, I ain't never been about showbo. Never been about that. And, and I'm not, I'm not going to gain fame on somebody's, on, on a situation like this. That's all I'm saying.
But it's making it a little more volatile. So I just want to, I just want to say something really quick. So what, everybody's here tonight to speak about what has happened in our community.
Right.
Um, my name is Selena King. I'm speaking not in my official position as Northwest Regional Representative for U.S. Senator John Fetterman. I am speaking as the Chair of the Pennsylvania Legislative Black Caucus Foundation Chair, which represent, that, that represents the legislators of color for our state representatives in the House, State Senate, and the House of Representatives. Um, we did release a statement about what happened in our city. And our state senators, our state House of Representatives are very disturbed about what happened. And so what we are asking from the city council, what we are asking also from county council today, what is relevant is for city council, is for transparency, for support, in asking that this investigation go forward and that we have support because it's the first time this has ever happened in our Commonwealth. It's the first time this has ever happened in our nation. We had a man, unarmed man, black man, a father, a son, a nephew, a community member who was set to be released from parole on July 18th, who was trying to get his life back together. And as we know, the nation has been arrested with police brutality and other things. And so we want to make sure that this investigation goes along swiftly. But there has not been any type of, any kind of investigation that has gone forward that's given answers to the community. A lot of people feel gaslit. They have not gotten answers. Um, as you know, I've worked with you all in many different capacities. And so we are asking that you all in your positions, that you make sure that you talk to the DA, you talk to the state police. There has not been a statement from PSP. We've gotten a statement from the FOP. That is a union. That is not the Pennsylvania State Police Association. So that is not acceptable. We have got, not gotten a real answer from the governor, who ran on being a person who said that I will make sure that any person who is not above the law is accountable. We have not gotten an answer. We have not gotten an answer from the Clear Commission, who was put into place to make sure that there was clear, that was clear accountability. We have not gotten an answer. We have not gotten an answer about why this has happened. This should not have ever happened for a man who tried to not have conflict. It does not make sense. This man who has had a son, an older son who is getting ready to graduate with two degrees from a university, a, a daughter who's getting ready to graduate from high school, a seven-year-old son who will never get to know his father, a man who was trying to turn his life around. We have legislation in place who talks about second chances. He was trying to have his second chance. He never got to have that opportunity. We have a bill, SB 1278, that was signed into law by our governor, Josh Shapiro, in December of 2023, that became Act 53, which is called Act 53 of 2023, that required our state parole officers to wear body cams. For some reason, that never happened. So there has to be accountability and transparency to say why? Why was that information not sent out? Why was that, why did we not have body cams? Why was that funding not allocated? Why was it not dispersed here in Erie County? We have to make sure that we are doing what we do in our positions of, of accountability, our positions of authority. Why are we not doing that? When we are elected to these positions, this is more for us to just rule over people, but to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to make sure that our lives are more than we say work, live, and play. But make sure that our citizens have a place that they can do what they can do and also to have that second chance. So all we are asking today is that you really look into the situation, that you can use the position that you were elected to do, Mr. Trup, Mr. Razinsky, Dr. Titus, Mr. Nelson, Ms. Flores, Mayor Schember, and your, and the term that you have remating, that you ask our state, please do this for not just Mr. Woodard, but for his family, to ask, what happened? Why is SB 1278 not put into place? If we have to name it after him so that this never happens again, please do so. So as my role as the Chair of the Pennsylvania Legislative Black Caucus Foundation to advocate for all 67 counties across this Commonwealth, that is my job to do here in Erie County. Because what happens for us, because we don't have legislators of color here in Northwest Pennsylvania, that is my job to do. And so that's why I stand here before you today. And I'm going to do this, and I'm going to beat the drum of justice across this, across this Commonwealth as a person that's from Sharon, Pennsylvania, who decided to make Erie my home and to raise my two sons here to ensure that all people of color, but not just people of color, but all people of this Commonwealth have equity, have fairness, and have justice. And so that's what I ask for you to do today, to ensure that this man did not die in vain, but that we make sure that fairness is done. So thank you so much for your time today.
Mr. Trup, I just, I think the people need clarity on, are you referring to this up here being a show or?
No, this up here.
Yeah, I, that was real clear.
I definitely want to talk about the people out there. Definitely, definitely not.
No, no.
And I, and I, and I, and I'm not going to argue with my colleague right now about this. We can, we can talk after, afterwards.
I'm, I'm not arguing with you about that. And, and I'm.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
Excuse me, Mr. President. May I, um, say something as well since, um, so many people on, uh, council have said something?
Don't, don't give him criticism.
I got you. I got you.
They talking, they telling us right now, listen, when we, when we protesting, over at the, over at the courthouse, the sheriff sitting in the window the whole time. When they came outside, that's when it felt like they, we was, we was wanting to our people. When the sheriff going to say, Mike, we trying to support that. I said, bro, you gotta let them talk. You gotta let them talk. Like, ain't that they gonna yell in your face? You gotta let them talk behind their windows. It's like y'all can't hear us. Y'all, when they got on the front lines, we yelling, protesting, y'all be heroes now. They showed they can hear us. When, 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 when the justice system, there's one family. There's justice system family, and then you got the community's family.
Us.
Us. There's two families in this, this right now. That's what we looking at. We're sticking together. Who side is y'all? Little tough. That's who we are. You come out to us, you come ten toe running with us like Mr. Nelson, Mr. Titus did, where the state, some of y'all, you know, when y'all came ten toes down, y'all went looking at us, looking like this, y'all looking at us like this. We would show, we would the people. That's what we seen. Darius came out, Mr. Sherman, you came to leave the ground running. When the chief of police came, we was shouting. But they was there with us. This brother Andre came out with the poses across the street. Brother Andre, give that to Saul, show the love. That's what we talking about. One of these y'all be there for 10 hours, 2 hours, and then pull up, say what's up? Give that to the people. Give that to his dad, his mom. Something for this to be on you, okay? State, listen to this. If y'all really feel his family was going down, send a little paper, a, a care package to his family who's going on some bread. That's our task for y'all people. We want to get that to them, not to the police that's telling us. Get that bread to his family. Send his family a care package. Help, benefit, guarantee, what y'all got to do? Go on people, go on people with a check. Hey, we paid for the funeral. That's the little thing, you know what I mean? You should say that y'all care. His, his kids don't got a dad no more. They don't got a dad no more. And, and, and his whole family is missing, missing a piece of the puzzle. Y'all call y'all piece of the puzzle. I'm thinking, actually, everybody, y'all couldn't get killed in the meantime. Say the wrong guy. We came out to back there. People hear me out, too. You know what I'm saying? This is real, this is, this is home. Is this y'all home? Did y'all represent that 81 vote Erie life? Do y'all do that? Is this what y'all really represent? Stay in tow for it, dude. Is y'all trying to pull up? Listen, I'm telling y'all, when I say what I say, y'all names will not be forgotten. This right here will not be forgotten when it come down to that time for that vote. That's the plea. Y'all stay down here, the black community don't vote, she is. Guess what? We won't vote about this one. I'm telling you, when they say they're going to have, when the bird going to make that next? Going to never bird, never bird ever come in and take our seat. They don't look on this one. That's real talk. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Um, may I extend, um, my sympathy to Marcelo Woodward's family at this time? I, um, am very deeply, deeply grieving for our community and the family and friends and relatives of Marcelo Woodward. I, as a city councilperson, want to tell you that I was not able to attend the rally and am thankful for Chief Dan, the mayor, and Brother D, who all spoke at the rally. Mr. Woodward's family has my very deepest sympathy. I did not attend because my brother-in-law was visiting from Texas and my sister-in-law was having a family party at the same time of the rally. And I can't be at two places at one time. And I was brought up that family is so important. And I then, the, um, next day, I believe, that Sunday, July 6th, after my own services at my church, I went to the Second Baptist Church and sat with the community members who came to show their respect. There was Father, uh, Retired Bishop Moth, who had the Woodward family and other family members from the church who had lost loved ones that week. And thankful that he prayed and we prayed over them. And then, as course, the service. And I felt very welcomed by the people of the Second Baptist Church community and listened to Nikki Page's talk, which said things do take time. Her prosecutor knowledge as an attorney, she was very mindful that things won't have an answer right away. And then, after that, we had Darrell, Pastor Darrell Cook, and his speech was. And then, after that, we had Daryl, Pastor Daryl Cook, and his speech was No Justice, No Peace, K-N-O-W, this, K-N-O-W, peace. This is all online, the entire two and a half hours or so of the service. I did go up and give a small check that I could to the Woodward family for the funeral. We're all grieving as an Erie community. This is something we never, ever thought. But I just try to be present in ways that I know how. I was not able to attend the funeral because I am out of town. I have listened to all 25 people who spoke, up to Bob Strasser, which I thought was the last person. Thank you, Selena King, for providing other assistance to us all. And just to say, God bless us, everyone. And we, I know, because I've lived in Erie all my life, we, we will get through this. And I hope to say yes to the central city revitalization and other neighborhoods as well. I just try to do my best, and thank you for the time to speak.
May I please, 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 without being insulting to anybody, please? That, as a white woman, that is why people do not feel hurt.
No, no, no. That's not why we're here tonight, Gary. I'm not going to allow you, don't say that. Don't say that. Yeah, I know, but that's, that's, that's her business. That's her business. Well, that's, that's her business. Let it be, let it be.
Okay, folks, if you have to look at us and ask us how we feel, then you don't know at least a few of us. I probably taught, I know I taught a lot of Woodards, probably know you, Michael, maybe your dad or your uncle or whatever, go all the way back to Bubby, where he ran next to Woody Thompson. So I, I know what it's like. I was brought up on the Lower East Side, and we've made the calls already. They don't know who shot Kennedy, and we're going to get answers, we want them, but it's going to take us a little bit of time. We'll put pressure on them there. We'll light them up, but you got to stick together. You know, a young man came in here and spoke. He was a young man, could have gone either way. He could have got pulled with a bad group and things like that, but he grabbed his shoelaces, he tied them up, ended up at University of Maryland, and ended up playing in the Super Bowl. That was Cliff Crosby. And there are people here making fun of the guy. That was really, really wrong, guys. Cliff Crosby is one heck of a kid. He's in town because he is running a football camp at the stadium tomorrow and Friday, I believe. That's Cliff Crosby. And we got to stick together. You don't make fun of people like that. He's a success story. We are doing it. Like I said, if you want to get somebody's attention, whisper. Don't yell. Thank you.
I was very saddened when I heard what happened. And I start to analyze. Shot, somebody killed, nobody arrested, no handcuffs. I'm not in the patrol car, I'm not taken to the district justice, read my rights, and locked me up in the county. I didn't see that, so I felt personally something's wrong with this picture. You didn't see me at the rally, nor did you see me at the funeral, because it brought some things back to me that I thought was gone. I lost a brother in Jersey City, shot with double-barrel shotgun, close range. I'm 17. I'm involved with a gang, the largest gang in Newark, New Jersey. I organize, we went over Jersey City looking for the person. Well, when we got there, we didn't realize it was a family. And when you talk Jersey City and you talk family, you're talking to mafia. At the time of my graduation from high school, I had to leave Newark, New Jersey. I had to leave the mom and the dad, or I wouldn't be here today. So I'm on, I'm living that side. It was two days in Nebraska where I went to school. You can go buy a gun, no paper necessary. I played football and basketball, and a tackle, good guy, nice guy. And the guys came to my room, and we got high. They left, I had the clip in my gun. Nick came in my room. I say, you know, Nick, I can blow your head off. He said, go ahead, and I did. I shot him in the head point blank, this close. I stayed in jail. One night, I never went to court, I went back to basketball. How did that happen? Because I had a family member, one of my uncles. He was involved with one of the families. That family made a call from Newark to New York, to Omaha, to Nebraska where I was at, and I was out the next day. See, so that's having the right contact at the right time. My point is, when my son told me about Cello, it all came back. And I laid low, but I care. Roosevelt told me that Cello, I think coached one of the teams in the league. I said, I don't remember him. He said, he only did it for a year. He said, you know what, Mr. Spoon? I think we ought to, next year, we should dedicate the league to Cello. I told him, well, we have to ask permission from the family first. And that's one of the things we're going to do, and I hope they say yes. And we're going to design a shirt that Spoon's League never had before, in that honor. On the flip side, as President of Council, I heard you tonight. I will ask Council to co-sign a letter asking the DA for some information. If I don't get a unanimous okay, then I'll do it myself. Okay? I'll do it myself, because I want answers. I know if I shoot somebody, and I know a lot of the police officers in the city, they have to cuff me. They have to. Why? He might run away. And what I've seen and what people have told me, how far could Cello have gone? I gave some simple scenarios. I said, he may not have a tank full of gas, so where he going? If you want to catch him, get on your radio, block 90 Eastern West, block 79 South, block 19 South, block 8 South, can't get out of Erie. It was a useless, in my opinion, just mine. No, he didn't have to die. Yes, you need answers, the family need answers. I want answers. Can I force them to give me answers? No. I can't force them, but I can take the first step and write a letter of request. And I will review tonight's tape, and I will get with Selena, and she'll give me the questions that her organization wants to know, and we'll go from there. But I appreciate seeing these seats filled for a good cause, and we have to do something. We need answers. The family need answers. The community need answers. And those of you who know me and some know of me, we going to make something happen. Because I've been down across the street speaking to judges on behalf of a lot of young men, and the judges that have given them 15, he might give them probation, and I'll continue to do that. But I know, in, in one of our old street terms, I know the natives are restless. And it was said tonight, we don't know how long we can hold back. We just want some answers. So with the permission and consensus of Council, we'll draft a letter and ask for some information that was asked tonight, so you know we're doing what you have asked us to do, what you come here, came here for tonight. We're going to do that. Yes, sir.
One question I can't, y'all can't, because the, can the cities do something to, so we got to meet down tomorrow to, for Marcelo? Like, like y'all put, like, in the alleyways and things like that, should we get something dedicated from the cities to Marcelo?
Somebody came up and spoke about what the police, what was that spy spoke about, about somebody, the police had been screaming something, was that, explain broader? Although somewhere this spy was talking about the fish being held accountable or something?
Probably screaming.
Yeah, well, this, actually, they wanted, they said they wanted, she spoke about that could be the boss, the pastor, his name, oh, something I figured out, but it was something that they wanted to be his name, now, way more important, just me, they tried to keep his job, I guess for about seven years now, they've been trying to grease it up with the police department, all of them, get the, what were they, what, bring that to attention. So that, I think that, I don't understand what the football situation, but for the, for something that's going to try to be, for that to be into his name, that's, that we've been trying to move for seven years, that's more honorable than, you know, football. I understand what you're saying with that. That's where there has to be, you know, pound for pound, the neighbors, the neighbors, y'all, you understand? If I figure out what it is, but, you know, you put something in his name, you got to say, they'll stand for something, and I think that, that would be, that would be more, you know, be more justified, or more placey for his name.
Well, can you and I get together so I have a better understanding of, you know, what you're asking, and then we'll see if we can do it? Yeah. But I need to understand, right now, I, I got bits and pieces. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Man, I love y'all. Oh, man. I, I, I'm, I'm, I'mma take my mic off now, because y'all about to make me tear up, and you know, big fella ain't going to tear up. No, no, I'm bad, I don't go tear up. You know? God bless.
Justice for Cello.
Anybody, anybody else? Justice for Cello. All right, I believe that will, in the special session, we'll get back to our regular business if there's nothing else. God bless. I love you.
Do I need a motion to get back to business?
I don't even know.
Because if so, I motion for us to get back to the agenda.
Do I even put this in the minutes?
I'll second Jasmine's request.
It's a motion to get back to the agenda?
Correct.
Continuing with the agenda, ordinances for final passage. Council file number 16544, official ordinance 542025, an ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the city of Erie, namely Article 7 of the zoning code, and specifically to amend section 701, 702, 703, 704, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, and 799, which defines the duties and structure of the Historic Review Commission, streamlines the review process for historic preservation applications, revises the nomination process, explains the certificate of appropriateness process, and promotes the preservation of the city's historic structures, objects, and/or resources. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaaf, seconded by Councilmember Titus, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16544, and now known as Official File Ordinance 542025, be finally passed by City Council. Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaaf, Titus, Tru, Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 542025, finally by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16545, official ordinance 552025, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $11,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof, penalty elect generator revenue. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16545, and now known as Official File Ordinance 552025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaaf, Titus, Tru, and Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 552025, finally by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16546, official ordinance 562025, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $16,322.02 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof for a fire company and emergency medical services, FCEMS grant, from the Office of the State Fire Commissioner to purchase a battery-operated rescue tool. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaaf, seconded by Councilmember Tru, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16546, and now known as Official File Ordinance 562025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaaf, Titus, Tru, Witherspoon. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council passed official file ordinance fifty-six twenty-two-five finally by yea seven, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number sixteen five forty-seven, an ordinance appropriating the sum of four hundred and forty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty cents from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the project. Funding is from the PennDOT Transportation Alternative Program Grant. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the council file ordinance number sixteen five forty-seven haven't been read as hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen five forty-seven by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. Council President, this takes us to new business.
Motion to move the balance.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
Any separations?
I'd like to separate number two, under, under new business, number two, number three, under contracts, number six.
I'm separating number two and number three on new business and number six under contracts. Correct? Any other separations? Any other separations? Motion to move the balance of the agenda. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. Council file number, oh, number two for me. Resolved by the City Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Erie Western Port Authority, One Holland Street, Erie, Pennsylvania, one six five zero seven. The agreement addresses the need for temporary paving on a ravine drive until a permanent paving solution can be completed. The agreement provides for areas of partnership and cooperation regarding material, labor, and equipment to adequately perform the work. Discussion?
Mr. President, I don't need to go into a long discussion. I just simply wanted the, the opportunity to, to vote, to vote no. I heard what was said tonight in the comments. And so I just wanted, I wanted the opportunity to be able to vote no on this individually.
Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution, Brzezinski, Flores?
No.
Nelson? Shaw? Titus?
No.
Troop? Witherspoon. Resolution passes, yea's five, nays two. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Shaw. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, the Knox-McLaughlin-Gornall Senate is appointed as Bond Counsel and PNC Capital Markets LLC is appointed as underwriter in regard to the issuance and sale of the General Obligation Bond Series of twenty twenty-five for the purpose of financing capital improvements to city facilities. Bond Counsel, the underwriter of the mayor, the administration, chief financial officer, and solicitor are hereby authorized to take any and all necessary steps to proceed forward with this transition. Discussion?
Mr. President, much of what I wanted to say was said in caucus, really just reiterating, I'm, there's too much unknown still for this. So I cannot in good conscience move forward.
Mr. President?
Yes.
There's a lot of unanswered questions here. If I get the right answers, I will vote yes on it the second time. Blind faith, this looks like we're trying to jam in a thirty million dollar bond issue with a, I'm sorry, a new mayor taking over without having any say in it. I want to find out what it's all about and get the rest of it. But I don't want to hold up the attorney's paperwork in the meantime. So if we get our right answers, I will be a yes the second time also. If we don't, it'll be a no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just want to make a comment that this project was something that was introduced to us a couple of years ago. I've always questioned where we were gonna get the funding for it. I understand the need. I understand that we have to do something because our current building cannot sustain the machinery that's there. I also know that this issue is not going to go away regardless of who's coming in and who's going out. So I would hope that any administration coming in would understand that there's certain needs that the city has. And whether or not they're on your plan, they're gonna need to be addressed. So I hope that the understanding that the fire department's equipment cannot sustain itself at the Marsh Building is understood. We just have to purchase metal sheets of, what is it, sheet? Whatever, either way, we're putting it on the ground to sustain the building's life. So right now, the equipment that's there is really expensive. And I, in good conscience, cannot sit and wait to see what happens in six months. So I'm going to be voting in favor of this and hope for the best and see what happens. But I do want people to understand that the needs of the fire department and the police department for this building to be sustainable is a priority for this administration, and it has been. Hopefully, it is one in the next one. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just one thing.
I would like to say something that, can you hear me?
Yes.
Unfortunately.
Yes.
Thank you. You know, so many people came up and spoke today. And they did mention that this happened in the central city area. And I would think that this would be a good community partnership and that this public safety building would extend, we know for the PALS program, for training, and be a good community partner to this neighborhood. And I really feel that if this doesn't get done, I could picture just an eyesore and it being wiped off the map completely. And there we have nothing. And it looks perhaps like some things on West Twelfth Street that are nothing. And nothing is nothing. And we can make this into something. And this something could be a partnership so that four blocks at least, to the north, to the east, to the west, to the south. This is a presence in the community of public safety. And it could be a small step towards revitalizing this area, to make it something. It was the Kohler Administration Building. We don't need to destroy. We need to revitalize. And it can be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just wanted to make one thing clear. Mr. Brzezinski made reference to two votes or two readings. This is, this proposal before you is a resolution. This is a one-shot deal. There would not be two readings. The issuance of the bonds would require the double reading. But this is a one-shot deal. So I just want to make it clear you would not be voting on this a second time.
Thanks, sir. But I do have the right to say no to the bond when they bring it, if we don't get the answers.
Correct. I just didn't want there to be any misunderstanding.
Perfect. Thank you. That's what you're doing.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Make the same comment that I made in caucus. People are concerned, like, we're getting a new mayor. They shouldn't have to deal with this. If this, the mayor that's in there now would have still been moving forward, he would have also had to deal with this. So I think when people run for mayor, they have to understand what's, what's in the basket when they run for mayor. I think that, you know, if this, like, as Councilwoman Flores said, this is something that is a necessity. I think, you know, either we're gonna move forward this plan or the new mayor is gonna have to come, show us a plan that, an alternative for this. So I think it's gonna be an issue that the new mayor will have to address.
Uh, thank you. And if I'm correct, when Mayor Schimber took office, you had some debts working for, waiting for you, weren't you? You had some debts when you took office as a mayor? Or did you come in with a balanced budget?
Funds? Yeah. I think we paid a lot of debt off, I know that.
Yeah. And most cities have that. It's almost automatic.
We have much less debt now than when I took office.
That's true. That is true. Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution, Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson?
No.
Shaw? Titus?
No.
Troop? Witherspoon? Resolution passes, yea's five, nays two. This is number six. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue an agreement to Empire Snow Management, Inc., one oh eight six zero Donation Road, Waterford, Pennsylvania, for the twenty twenty-five curb ramps, number one bid, eighteen thirty-three dash twenty-five, for the Bureau of Engineering at a total cost of one hundred and eighty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-two twenty. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
The reason I separated this is, back in caucus, we were able to ask the question around the contract language, specifically if, as this, this company is working forward, that they're not gonna close off all four intersections at a time. The contract language was not updated. We were told that this will be part of the discussion that it's had with the contractors. However, for me, I would like to see the contract updated before moving forward on this. So that is why I separated it, so I could vote no.
Any other discussion?
Well, I just want to say that Dr. Titus did mention that the engineering department is going to be sitting down with them before they do their construction. So I think that would hold. You know, your word is your word. So, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I wanted to have a comment that I was the councilperson who implemented the, what is it, the sidewalk closure, making sure that pedestrians maintained access. So getting the reports in the email that stated that at times we close all four, you know, intersections for people is disheartening to my heart. We have an abundancy of medically able-bodied people who need equipment to be able to get around our city. And they pride themselves on their independence. And when you close off all four sidewalks, you make them have to travel in our streets. And as somebody who used to be a pedestrian until I got my vehicle, a lot of our drivers are very impatient, and they do not look out. And it's unfortunate that we've had deaths due to this. So I'm not going to be voting in favor of this until I know what we're doing to make sure that we're not closing all four curb ramps. And I understand that there's conversation, the communication. That's great. But I have asked that we make sure that we prioritize pedestrians all four years that I've been here. And that's gonna continue to be something that I, I champion for just because I work with the community that needs more time to get across. So with that being said, I have no other comments. But I do want to see the implementations of the plans to make sure that we're not closing all four. If we're gonna close two, leave the other two open, and then we'll come back to the project. If we can't do it that way because it's too cost-effective, well, then we need to find a way that works for everyone, including our medically unable-bodied residents. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President? I'd like to make a motion to table this one.
I'll second.
It's been moved to table in second.
Motion to table the resolution, sponsored by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Titus, members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon.
No.
Motion to table passes, yea six, nays one. I think this takes us to committee reports.
Think I can put a time limit on it?
I don't need a time limit. I'm not gonna go over report. I feel like a lot was discussed tonight. And I know that a lot of people do want transparency and justice for the community member, Cello Woodard. And I hope that with our pressure, because I do plan on signing on to that letter, President Witherspoon, that we're able to get the answers and transparency that we deserve as a community. Because I know that there are a lot of young men and men as a whole in our community that are treated differently and who do fear authority figures. And we have to change that. And the only way to change that is if we shine light on the injustices that occur. And that man was murdered a few weeks before he was going to be released from parole. As someone who just had a brother released from state prison who's on parole, I would be devastated if that happened to my brother, who has a six-year-old son. So I do sympathize and I do understand. And I'm hopeful that we will get the answers that this community deserves because they have been vocal and active. And I want to see that continue because everybody deserves to be heard. Thank you.
As we see, a lot of the community has left. So just wanted to, the, the step forward with the retaining a solicitor for, or counsel for the bond issuance. You know, that building, I didn't participate in the discussion, but I voted against it. Wanted to explain my vote a little bit there. I was president of City Council when that building was purchased. I believe in the project. I believe in center city and historic preservation. I believe in having a central location. And I understand the need. I do hope to, you know, that there is solutions in place. I'm not comfortable in my last months being a part of that push forward. But, you know, I'm content to see it pass. And I'm happy that we have two more weeks to figure out the sidewalk situation. I didn't have any authorities that met in the last two weeks that I'm a liaison to, so I have no further report.
I'll step into my report and I'll step quick. The liaison positions, I don't have anything to report on, on tonight. Just to kind of echo what, what has been shared already, there's, there was a lot of hurt and there was a lot of pain. And I know that we didn't hear a lot of the voices that still needed to be spoken up. And I'll stand beside the statements that I made. And my intent is to always uplift others. It's, it's, the farthest is centering myself is always about centering others. And that's, that's why I ran for office. That's why I hold office. And I'm, I'm grateful for the opportunity to do so and to work and to create clarity and transparency and some accountability.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, thank you. First off, I will not apologize for my harsh tone protecting Cliff Crosby. He was one of my guys when I was a senior counselor at East High. And he never went away. I was hoping tonight would be more of a I was hoping tonight would be more of a tribute to him, because he's coming, he came home again today. This, not today, but he came home again because he's going to run a camp for our kids at the stadium tomorrow and Friday. He didn't deserve to be catcalled when he was trying to say the right things. Anyway, that being said, very quickly, the Port Authority is up and running with all the things, working together with eight great Tuesdays, with Erie Vence taking over logistics, has been working fantastically. So all those things are good. I'm probably going to forget something, so I'm going to get in trouble, but I think that kind of wraps it up. If I remember something, I'll jump back in. Good.
Dr. Troop?
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, I just, I want to wish my condolences to the Woodard family, and really to the whole community, because like, the whole community is feeling this right now. You know, I think everybody can sense what's going on, so I don't think it's, I think we all feel it. So I got to say that, and Mr. Witherspoon, I would, when you meet with Selena, I would say that some of the other people that have been out in the forefront, you know, Terry and Jerry Roberts, you know, Malcolm Pooham, some of, those are some of the names, you know, that I've seen, you know, Sarah Bridget, that have organized a lot of these things and have been doing it since the start. So I would say, if you can, when you meet with Selena, those people should be at the table too, and some of their questions, and Mr. Woodard himself, you know, so they can get their perspective. And, you know, we, you know, we all heard. People show it in different ways, but believe me, we all feel this. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you very much. I echo what my colleagues, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Kathy, Kathy and...
Yes, yes, I'm still here. Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to say thank you to all who spoke today, and I also, like I had mentioned, give my sympathy to all who are mourning and suffering, and give my sympathy to Marcello Woodard's family. And I don't really have a report other than to say I go do what I can, and I had to on review board on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm in my 22nd year of serving on City Council, and I've served with some good people and great people. But the council I serve with now is the most diverse, educated individuals that I've served on as a group. And I say it publicly, and I mean it. We don't agree on everything, and that's good, because you get a different perspective. When I read something, I get my interpretation. When Doc reads something, he gets his interpretation. And I can tell you, Doc, he send me voicemail, he don't send me texts. I hear, I hear his voice, and so with the sound of his voice, I know exactly if he really mean it, because he goes up and he goes down. And that's good. That helps me make my decision. We have Vice Principal Troop. He deals with kids all the time, every day. He's an educator. We have Councilwoman Flores. She deals with people in the community all the time, every day, probably half the night sometimes. We have Councilman Chuck Nelson. Chuck is a mathematician. He knows the numbers, he knows the figures, and he question administration, and he bring his thoughts back to the group. That's what we're about. We are a unit. To the Crosby family, or to the Woodard family, it's a sad day, a sad week, it'll be a sad several months, you never get over it. But you have to keep on keeping on. That's what I do. But there will be certain situations that will flip the trigger and make you think of it once again. And this incident with Cello kind of flipped the figure again for me, but I'll get over I want to thank all the folks that showed up today, and if it wasn't for Councilman Nelson, we wouldn't have had a dialogue with some of the folks that was left. And I think that was a good thing. They got our feelings, and we got some other feelings, and it was jubilant conversation. Attorney Betts?
I have no report.
Mayor?
I'm going to be very brief, but first I wanted to thank Daria Devlin for being here. I didn't see her to begin, there's so many people out there, but eventually I did, and I appreciate that, and we talked back on May 30th. And I've committed, once you're elected, I'll do anything you want to transition into here. Also, I just wanted to say, in relation to everything that we've talked about, is I'm 100% in favor of fairness and justice with everyone, not just with people of certain skin color, but every man, every woman, every different nationality. We have a lot, a lot of different nationalities here in Erie, I think, and in Pennsylvania, but especially in Erie, and I'm very, very proud of that as well. So I treat everyone with fairness and justice. I know I haven't achieved everything that I was trying to achieve, but I think we have made some progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, hey, look here, I thought your arm was broke. This meeting is adjourned.